Roger Goodman.
Thank you, God, you instructed us to bring prayers and intercessions on behalf of our leaders and those in authority, our elected officials, God. So today we bring prayers and intercessions for you, that you would fill them with wisdom and knowledge of your will, God. God, you said that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. So we ask, God, we acknowledge you and we ask for your wisdom to prevail here, for your wisdom, for good decisions that will be a blessing to all of the people of this county, Father. And also, God, you said blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. So we acknowledge you, God. We ask you to bless this nation, bless Arizona, bless Pinellas County, and bless this meeting. We ask for your spirit to be upon our leaders and give them wisdom today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Chairman McClure is, will not be in attendance, so I'm going to be running it, so bear with me if there's any awkward moments. First up, we're going to have a call to the public, and I have them here. If anybody wants to speak afterwards, you will still have a chance, even if you didn't turn one of these in. And I believe there's a three-minute limit, right? So we're going to try to keep it to that. First one up is Heather Moorheart.
Good morning, Board. My name is Heather Moorheart. I live at 42657 North Suburban Avenue in Santan Valley. Obviously, you can see I'm here with the two of my kids. My other two kids are in school right now. So I'm a mom, first and foremost. I'm a wife, I'm a granddaughter, and I'm a daughter. The other thing I used to be also was a teacher. And I know that this battery plant, that's what I'm here to talk about, is very close to two schools, to Ranch Elementary and to Combs High School. Being a teacher, I can tell you that I did not get paid enough to go to school every day to be exposed to toxins and chemicals, not at all. I have a master's in math education, and there was no way somebody could pay me enough money to work there. The school's going to lose teachers because they're not going to want to work there. They're going to lose state funding, they're going to lose federal funding, they're going to lose student attendance. So if we want to build our education up in Arizona, putting that algae battery plant right there is not the answer. There is a 55 and older community that lives within feet of this algae battery plant. A woman told me that she is wheelchair-bound. If there's an emergency, how in the world is she going to get out of her house? She lives alone, and she's wheelchair-bound. She has to call medical transport. I know that because my mom was dying of cancer, and we had to call medical transport to move her. Days of reservations. I've kind of heard some grumblings through the fire department. We don't have enough fire department people to help this 55 and older community. How are they supposed to get out of their homes? And the long-term effects of these chemicals in their bodies, it's not worth it. So we've talked about evacuation plans for the older people or elderly people. What about those in my community that have 20 or more horses? If it's 115 degrees and that battery plant explodes, how are those people supposed to get their horses in a horse trailer along with their sheep, their cows, their chickens, their kids? And where are they supposed to put them? And for how long? The Superior Battery Plant in Illinois has blown up. Over 5,000 people have been replaced for over a week. If that was in Arizona, in our animals, in our livestock, in our children, where are we supposed to put them for a week? If I have my horses or my mules in a horse trailer, where are they supposed to go? Because Motel Six won't take them. Manes and Miracles runs a therapeutic course program there, autistic children, special needs children. They're going to lose businesses because those parents are trying to avoid toxins in their kids' lives. But every day, they're going to be going to Manes and Miracles with as in feet of a toxic battery plant? They're going to lose their business. And I know that those people are doing it out of the goodness of their heart to help children. The other thing is, what about when a fire happens, or if a kid comes up with cancer, or these things that are bound to happen, happen? Who's going to pay for that? What about the livelihoods of those people? We want to sell organic meat and organic eggs, and I cannot in good conscience tell somebody, yeah, I sell this organic stuff, but I live within feet of a battery plant. So what about the livelihoods, and who's going to pay to help people recover from this battery plant?
Okay, I see a red light there.
Is that it? Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Eleanor Waggoner.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Eleanor Waggoner. I live on East Pine Brook here in Florence. Forgive me, I'm not a big-time speaker, so I have some things written down. I'm here in support of our South Florence Fire Department. Personally, I just don't understand how anyone can morally allow someone else's house to burn down and refuse to do anything to help. When the equipment and services are out there and this is allowed to happen, it's not only ethically wrong, it should be criminally wrong, too. I don't know how anyone can morally live with themselves and allow this to happen. Shame on all of you who refuse to aid and give assistance in this tragedy. Put yourself in the place of these homeowners, and how would you feel if this happened to you? I've lived in the Florence area for almost 25 years now and have seen the tremendous growth. Just in our area alone, the growth is so dramatic, especially in the last year or two. In our area, which is south of the Whittler Rodeo Grounds, just off of 79, there is a tremendous amount of development. There are numerous homes being built by a developer, and at last count, in just our little area, there are 30-plus new homes. There are also several businesses there now, too. One particular property and business owner now has 14 visible buildings just on their property. We have a home improvement company that has just erected a huge pole building, and there are several other businesses that run huge trucks hauling heavy-duty equipment to their facilities constantly. To not have fire coverage is so wrong. We already pay fire assistance on our annual property taxes. Maybe increase that tax a little bit and provide us full fire coverage and protect your hard-working, tax-paying citizens. This is not a third-world country, and not to provide fire protections to your citizens is very, very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Kalius.
Good morning.
And if we could get your address, it would help.
Sure. Bear with me one second. I live off Florence Kelvin in the Pinellas County area. Thank you very much for your service and for the opportunity to speak today. I moved from an urban area to the rural area near Cactus Forest. I've been hearing residents express their gratitude for the volunteer South Florence Fire Department, which is great to hear, but then heard about the unfortunate recent tragedy of residents losing their home. And I'm just completely appalled for what seems to have been totally avoidable. How utterly sad for what appears to be a breakdown in communication and possibly in logistics that caused a home to burn. It's just completely unacceptable and a disaster. I don't 100% understand why we have this problem, so forgive me if I am stating anything incorrectly. So I have the following questions and comments. As we should all agree, this is a legitimate and very critical public safety problem that should be a very high priority to resolve as soon as possible. I am unclear why land is zoned for development, but a jurisdiction like Pinellas County does not have a plan to provide basic critical service like fire to that development, whether it is close to the downtown area or farther away. My understanding is that the fire department in downtown Florence will not service a fire outside of five miles. And if this is correct, how was this distance determined? Is there no contract with that Florence Fire Department? Or if the contract was not desirable, then why not? Is there room for negotiation? From what I have heard, there was a process that was apparently working, where South Florence Volunteer Fire Department would respond to calls and was included in the 911 system. If this changed, was this change not clearly communicated to the public? And if not, why not? If removing the volunteer fire department from the 911 system was due to questionable certifications, then there should be urgency in resolving that particular issue and having a temporary solution to be sure there are no gaps in providing fire service. Who is specifically addressing this problem? Is there an ad hoc committee charged with addressing this public safety problem? And finally, what are the next steps or plan of action? Is there a specific strategy and a timeline to solve this problem? We should not have to live at our own risk. Thank you.
Guy Wolf.
Good morning. My name is Guy Wolf. I've been a resident of the county for 22 years, and I'm an active member of the community. And years ago, I started investigation to see why we don't have fire protection. But I participated to the Zoom meeting organized by Mr. Kavanaugh, and I was shocked to hear what they said. It appears that the county attorney did not decide to cut off the volunteer fire department for the 911. And I want an investigation to be done to find out what is the process that he used. Who did he talk to? Where did he get his information to decide to take off something that's a matter of life? And did he inform the public? Why wouldn't he do that? Who authorized him to do that? Who is supervising him? So we should investigate the matter, because it's not simply a matter of writing a note on the paper. It involves life. Like, all we know that the couple lost their home, and could have lost their life, too. So there appears to be a disconnect between the management of the county, because apparently the supervisors don't appear to know why, the sheriff don't appear to know why. Now, who's going to know? Somebody has to investigate that, and we deserve an answer as a member of the community, because we are tired of being a second-class citizen, and we're paying taxes as well as everybody else. So we should have those answers pretty soon and not wait forever. Now, as far as the certification, how many fires that the volunteer has to fight in order before, to be certified? What is required to be certified? I mean, we have 14 people volunteering their own time, five trucks. What more do they have to do in order to be certified by the county? And who's the person in charge of that? Why does it take so long to do that? Why do I have to go through paperwork just to be certified? I mean, I've been to three fires already by the volunteer, and they did exactly what any fire department will do. What else? How much more do they have to do before they get a piece of paper saying that they are really firefighters? Do they have to do 20 fires? 30 fires? I mean, what's the rules? I mean, there is nothing in the book that indicates that, how many things they have to do. It's just they give you a paper and say you need to form a fire district. He already has the process. They have the fire truck. They have the volunteer already. So my question is that, who's going to be deciding when the certification is coming? It should not be a problem, as far as I'm concerned. And as a resident, I feel that I deserve an answer, and everybody else deserves an answer. All right? So there's a disconnect there. I mean, the supervisor, the sheriff, they seem to be independent, and they don't talk to each other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chris Dizik.
Thank you very much. Well, the first thing I want to do is kind of back in on what he was doing, is somewhere a decision was made. Somebody somewhere made a decision, and there's a decision-making process. And I think what we need to do is to go back into their decision-making process, look at the facts that they had, look at the assumptions that they had, and then, how did we come to this decision? Somebody, hopefully you, will look into how this decision was made. And I think that is the first place we need to start. I also think that the deal with a sheriff's deputy standing out there not doing anything is unbelievable. That should not even be allowed to happen. I mean, I can't think of any other case where something like this would be allowed to happen. As far as volunteers and volunteer firefighters, 66% of the firefighters in this country are volunteers. We have 1 million, I think the number is 1,080,668,000 of them are volunteers. And there's a process that goes through it. I was a volunteer for 10 years before I moved here, and I'm a volunteer with the South Florence. And I think Larry does a great job, very motivational, excellent leadership at the top. And I think you guys really need to look at this and back to South Florence Fire District.
Can we get an approximate address?
Excuse me?
Can we get an approximate address?
Yeah, I live down off of, it's East King Road. It doesn't show up on the map yet, but it's off Wendy and Bartlett.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Virginia Payne.
Good morning. My name is Virginia Payne. I reside on Desert Air Drive off of Florence Kelvin. My partner Eric and I purchased a home back in 2018, and I'm from back east, Moore City, so it was a little shock, but I love it here. Anyway, in July of 2020, our hay self-combusted, taking our garage with it. And forgive me if I cry, but we called 911. That's when we found out that the Florence Fire Department does not come to us. We didn't know. And we called the sheriff's department. The community came. The community came. And we didn't realize how great of a community we had until we had a tragedy. They were all there to help. We had a water hose. We just wanted to save our animals, our home. We did. We didn't want it to spread to our neighbors. They dispatched Grander, I think it is. I have it on my phone. The fire department out in the Oral Valley. It takes 59 minutes to get to our house. That's how far away. They're out of Tucson, which is crazy, when you find out that your fire department down the road doesn't come to you. I am aware of how emergency services work. I'm not a fire person, but I am a certified surgical technician. I work in the OR in Banner Hospital. We have to live in a 30-mile radius when there's emergency surgery. We have to get to the hospital. We have a pool, a case. We got to set it up, and we got to get a patient back there in the OR in a matter of minutes. Otherwise, it's a life. Material things mean nothing to me, you know, because I'm into lives. And next time, that's what's going to happen. We're going to be losing lives here, because you don't have anything really in place. After that fire prompted my neighbor Larry Vincent to form this fire department, he lives behind me. I can't fathom what he had to go through to put this together. He has such a great team that surrounds him and backs him, that I'm impressed. So it might be, oh, it's just a house, you know? That can be rebuilt. That's no big deal. It's going to be lives. I'm telling you, lives are going to be lost in the future if we don't get something together. And then, you're going to have blood on your hands. I don't mean to be rude like that, but when you're in the business and I'm in the business, that's what I think of. So, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Judy Ray.
Good morning. My name is Liberty Krennis. I'm speaking on behalf of Judy Ray, who is a disabled resident who lives off North Razorback in the Pisano area, who asked me to read the following. I wish to make my concerns known regarding the recent failure of our 911 system. I find it horrifying that someone decided to dismiss a call for help to fight a house fire in our area. I want to know why the county attorney would remove the fire department from the 911 system without giving everyone a public notice. I think we deserve an explanation. Thank God no people were killed this time. For me, it is especially upsetting. I am severely disabled, in a power wheelchair, and I am unable to get out of bed without help. I do have a lifeline button, similar to the help I've fallen and can't get up system we are all familiar with. I have this button programmed to call 911 if and when I need help. I have used it several times. I also have a cell phone I use to call for help in emergencies. It is also programmed to call 911. After this debacle happened, what am I expected to do? I am now very, very scared. When has life become less precious? That's some red tape, legal issue. There needs to be accountability. Please find a solution to this as soon as possible. I say this not just for myself, but for my fellow neighbors as well. Thank you for your time, Judy Ray. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Hetzel.
It was my house that burnt, and I just stood there and laughed at it. Nobody cared. If they had called the fire department, they could have saved my house four times over.
Cassie Obergon.
My sister lives on the property. With Frank and Lisa, eight grown men sat there like little hood rat thugs and laughed and said, let's watch this roast. There were people with water, willing to help. They refused to allow through the gate. They weren't going to let them get their horses. They weren't going to let them do anything. Three cats didn't die. Over 20 animals perished at the fire. And you guys are acting like children. You have a supervisor who is saying that a fire marshal who never told him that they needed to be certified, said they needed to be certified, and then exited them from a 911 call list. How can you knowingly do that? They are here to help people. This was wrong.
Looks like Michael Colsteer. And if we could get your address, too, it'd be great.
It's Michael Colston. I'm a part-time resident over at Frank's house, Frank Hetzel's. I come up here like two weeks out of town, half a month to stay, and I just so happened to be here at the fire. I'm the one that called 911, and they told me that somebody was being dispatched to the residents for the fire. An hour later, there still ain't no, still no fire department or nothing. And I get sheriff and cities telling me they don't have a direct number to the fire department when I ask them. To my face, they tell me that. There are two emergency facilities. They have their direct numbers, no matter what. And for somebody to take 911, take them off of 911, one person took them off 911, how can somebody take an emergency facility off of a 911 call? Everybody in this country knows 911. Not just this little town. It ain't no new system. You know, it's been implanted many, many years. So there's no reason for them to be taken off 911. The house could have been saved. Me and Frank sat there and held it off to one room for like 45 minutes, you know, waiting for the fire trucks to get there. The only thing we got was sheriffs and city of Florence out there telling us, no, y'all can't go back there. Well, I don't screw you, we're going. You know, there's horses, there's other stuff around the house that need to be pulled off, you know, that would, they wouldn't have a place to stay right now. I had to get the RV away from there and everything, just so they have a place to stay. And we were hoping that it didn't catch fire. You know, the horses and everything, had to get those out. And then you got the sheriffs and city out there at the gate stopping 700 gallons of water coming in. That is just totally wrong, man. I don't care who you are and what you're doing. You don't stop water from going into a fire at all. Something needs to be done. I don't know if this guy has a vendetta against Larry and them, but that's what it seems like. If one person just pulled it off for nothing, because their regulations and their certifications and everything, they should have never been taken off at all. So somebody needs to do something to repay or compensate Frank and Mary Lisa. Because there ain't no doubt about, that was a gross, I mean, you just don't have no clue, unless it happens to you. Y'all don't, unless you got a fire, y'all don't know what's going on until it happens to you. It happened to me already. That's how I know. It shouldn't be like that. Something needs to be, something done with that guy that took off the 911 call.
Larry Vincent.
Larry Vincent. I live at 22143 East Sun Air Drive. I'm in Florence off of Kelvin and Quail Run. Excuse me. I'm one of these allergy-inflicted folks. We're here today, folks, hearing these stories. For the last year, working with multiple entities within the county, the Pinellas EMS, Emergency Service Manager, PCSO. When we started this thing, we contacted everybody that we knew of, that we were directed to go see, to follow the rules. We were being told in the newspaper, let me back up. So in February of 2021, I only got three minutes, 2021, we met with PCO, 911 Administrator and Dispatch, and they were gracious. They were open and willing to support this upstart entity because of the gap between, the 50-mile gap between Oracle and the canal south of Florence. Ginger's my neighbor, and her house burnt. We started on this path following the basic business plan of filing an Arizona Commission request for an incorporated nonprofit. We got our nonprofit status for 501(c)(3), and I believe it was March of 2021. Prior to getting that, we'd spoken with PCSO, shared with them what we wanted to do, and they were more than willing to help us in any way possible. What could we do to help? We set up a direct line that only PCSO has, and that direct line activates 14 of our volunteers instantaneously. The minute we get that call, I have 13 recorded calls in the last 13 months that when they called 911, we were on the roll. We've heard through the media. We've never been personally approached by anybody from the county attorney's office. I see that Mr. Volkman is sitting here. We appreciate that. It would have really been nice that we could have headed this off, and it's a shame Mr. McClure isn't here, because he's taken over our district. And two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago, we met with Mr. McClure, and he asked what was our number-one concern. There had been rumblings. There have been phone calls from PCSO that said they were receiving direction from the county attorney to remove us from the 911, and he suggested we reach out to them, and we did. On March the 2nd, approximately, at 2:30, I spoke with the number-two man in charge of PCSO, who directly gave me the contact number to that man's office, and I spoke to one of his surrogates, at which time they indicated they had concerns about liability, certification, licensing. Nobody in the state knew who we were. Nobody in the fire departments knew who we were. We were an unknown entity. They could not verify that we existed. I gave him my phone number, and he requested that I email a litany. I sent him three paragraphs of every certification, every organization we're arranged with. And I want to put this number out here. Our state issued through the Arizona- Our state issued, through the Arizona Fire Marshal, state-issued fire department ID number, FDID, is 12173. It's on the state Fire Marshal's website. It's called NIFERS. Every state has it. It's a National Fire Incident Reporting System. We're on it. Our number's on it. We're on the FEMA website. Using what number? 12173. We're in the National Fire Agency Registry. What's our number? 12173. Our number, our entity, we're so unknown in the state that the state Fire Marshal and their organization reached out to us last March and provided us paid scholarships to send five of us to the Arizona State Fire School. That's how unknown we are to the state Fire Marshal. That's how unknown we are. We've gotten so much support from Queen Valley, Oracle, Regional Fire, Mark Dillon over Coolidge, Jim Walter at the, at the City of Florence. They've given us great direction, pointed us where we can get information, access to online training. We're that unknown. We're so unknown that after 13 successful calls and joint operations at Christian Center Reynolds on October 17th, they didn't call us. We're so unknown that at Diffen Road in Cactus Forest, there was a fire that was approaching five separate houses.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and allow another three minutes for Larry Vincent.
Well, we're going, I know this is of utmost importance, but do try to wrap it up.
I will. So in one sentence, under the PRCC, because we've been given a half a dozen reasons through the media, we've never been contacted by the office that we pay for, we've never been reached out to, we have what they call a Pinnell Rural Communication Consortium, and the PCSO, signed by Mr. Lamb, was signed on March 17th of 2021. And in that very document, it says, "Either party can rescind this agreement with 30 days' written notification." We haven't gotten a postcard. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Brian Kovak.
I'm Brian Kovak. I live at 8362 North Dead Man's Gulch in Cactus Forest. Mr. Kavanaugh, Pinnell County Supervisor, Sheriff Lamb, if you were here, and deputies, who's thinking about their moral liability, responsibility to our community? Please review the video made by, made with Mr. Kavanaugh and the South Florence Fire Department on April 15th, during which he much lauded the fire department. Our neighbor's house fire was on April 19th, four days later. The South Florence Volunteer Fire Department was not notified by way of the emergency 911 system. None of us in our community were notified that we were removed from the 911 system. If you woke up one morning and your neighbor's house was on fire, and you knew there would be no fire department responding, wouldn't you think it was your moral responsibility to go and help them fight the fire? Or would you be the ones who prevented people from helping them? What if it was your home? Would you stop people from coming to help? Where's the sense in this decision to remove Cactus Forest neighborhood from the 911 notification system? Two years ago, yesterday, April 26, 2020, there on five acres of land, just 50 feet from my home, everything was ablaze. It was a Sunday morning at 10:30. I received a phone call from my neighbor who saw the flames from her home. I immediately ran with just my garden hose to fight the fire, while I'm sure my neighbor must have called 911 and notified many others. Two total strangers jumped over my gate and ran to help me with two more garden hoses. Then more people arrived with shovels and buckets, and one neighbor with another long hose. Somebody arrived with a front loader and carved a path for another neighbor to bring a water tank and pump into the fire. In all, there must have been about 30 people there on a Sunday morning. And even the sheriff's deputies were there, standing on the road. They didn't stop anyone from fighting the fire then? Why are they stopping people now? After half an hour, a fire truck from the Queen Valley, not Florence, showed up, asking if they can help, saying that they got a notice from 911 about this fire. And they worked on killing the rest of it until all the embers were extinguished. We stopped the fire just 50 feet from my house. That's what kind of community we have. All volunteers, people helping people. Why would you choose to stop us? What if it was your home in that fire on April 19th? Or how about tomorrow? What if it was your home?
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry Vincent.
Tiffany Nedrow.
Good morning, Pinnell County Board of Supervisors. My name is Tiffany Nedrow, and I reside at 1804 East Loveland Lane, Santan Valley, Arizona, 85140. I have many concerns with the LG building that's going to be a half a mile from my home, my kids' elementary school, Combs High School, three senior communities, and so many homes that have livestock on their properties. A huge concern of mine, and that has been, is the traffic and safety of our community and the elementary school that's right across the street that my children attend. Supervisor Goodman has been aware of the traffic and speeding problems that we currently have, and you said that you would work with getting the Arizona Pinnell Parkway in the works to help detour and alleviate the traffic away from our rural neighborhoods. But the plans that keep servicing only mentioned to Wyden Kenworthy Road, Schnepp Road, Germain Road, Queen Creek, Pima, Ironwood, and Ocatillo. And I got that information from the Town of Queen Creek, Pinnell County Small Area Transportation Study done and sent out dated December 2021. On page 46 of this study, it also mentions that Pinnell County is considering construction of a Parkway-type facility that will extend to SR24 and run parallel to the Arizona Canal along its western edge. Why is the Arizona Pinnell Parkway not a bigger topic at the moment? Why did you guys approve a community to come and get built along Ironwood Road and LG on Ironwood and Germain when our current roads and infrastructure can't accommodate the current population? The study also states on page 37 that the ASLG land that now is annexed into Queen Creek and Superstition Vista's development will cause increased traffic volumes traveling east and west to get access to the SR24. Once LG is built and the remaining 18 units in the annexed land in Queen Creek is filled with more and more plants, how long will it take the fire department to respond with our current infrastructure? How will we be notified if evacuation is needed? Where are we at with all of this progress that keeps getting mentioned that it's going to get done? And especially now with this issue, I mean, I would think roads would be a little more important than approving plants and more houses. Thank you.
Patrick Moorheart.
Good morning, County Board. My name is Patrick Moorheart. I'm a businessman and veteran. I'm located in the suburban ranches off of Pima and Suburban Avenue in Santan Valley. I come to you, once again, I thank you for your service to this great nation and our county, coming to you with concerns about, excuse me, the LG plant that's coming in and the subsequent development off of Pima and the federal trade zone as well. Basically, kind of put this to frames in a nutshell, our community is concerned because of our close proximity of the actual plant itself, or the proposed area. The biggest thing for us is our health, safety, and also the subsequent real estate values as well, and that's, that's a huge concern of ours. The 55 and older community, you heard that it's like, would be right across the street from it, of our citizens, our most vulnerable citizens in our county, they're at risk. The children, the schoolchildren, the nearby schools, also those of us that own livestock and, excuse me, that are trying to do farming, organic, organic produce and things like that. This close proximity to something that could potentially cause chemical spillage disasters much like it did in Illinois on the Morris Fire, I don't know if many of you are aware of it. We have some historical examples of what happened just recently in Chandler. These are all huge concerns of ours. I know that there are, excuse me here, the biggest, the bit, one of the other big issues, too, is that what infrastructure, say this plant were to go in, what are we, how are we going to mitigate some of these strategies? In the Morris Fire, there was 4,000 people that were evacuated immediately. Many people that have been in our area understand the roads. Like the lady that said before me, our roads cannot facilitate a mass evacuation. It just, it would not happen. What do we do with, say, livestock? I have my mules and horses and cattle in a horse trailer. I can't park in front of a hotel because that's now, I'm violating, you know, laws against humanity or inhumane laws regarding animal treatment. What, what strategies are in place for this? And the other question I have is, is there any other alternative? Is there a possibility that we could place this plant a little bit, I mean, further away from our community so we're not in danger of, you know, say if a chemical fire happens or an explosion? And lastly, environmental review, is there, has there been an environmental impact study on what that will take, what will happen when this plant is put in? What is it going to do to the water table? What's it going to do to our diminishing air quality in the valley? And so these are all huge concerns of mine. As a veteran, I know there's fellow veterans in our community. Do we have to, you know, we, some of us already struggle, struggle with anxiety and things that we've encountered in our past lives. Do we now have to worry about having to move? Are we having to put, you know, way out, you know, our children's health? Does our children's health have a price? And, and that's where this, and basically, you know, things of that nature and having to move and just uproot and move. I mean, the stress is, anyone that has moved is, understands the stresses that are involved in that. My family and I, we just moved there recently, less than a year ago, and here we're having to contemplate, do we have to do this again? Also, looking at real estate, you know, the real estate prices, what is that going to do? Most people are not going to want to move in close proximity to an LG plant, a basically a lithium ion battery plant that has a high risk of explosion, chemical spill, and everything else.
We were out of time.
Okay.
Thank you. Noel Rec.
Good morning, Board. I'm Noel Rec from Casa Grande. First, I'd like to commend the county for the informative emails that have been sent out recently. Yet, that brings up the question, what can citizens do when their elected officials will not communicate with them, such is my case? I've left message after message with Attorney General Burnovich's office regarding his failure to investigate the people who designed and or signed the fake slate of electors while he simultaneously has put forth a false interim report on the 2020 election, promulgating the big lie in his quest to obtain the endorsement of Trump in his run for the Senate. Those calls have gone unanswered. Likewise, I've left several messages with appointed Representative Teresa Martinez as a follow-up to a brief discussion I had with her at the Casa Grande Republican Meet and Greet several weeks ago, where she took my contact information and promised to invite me to an education summit in Maricopa, as well as to discuss her continued embrace of the big lie and the various voter suppression efforts that have followed. Those calls, until yesterday, when the staffer finally called me to say the summit had been canceled, have also gone unanswered. Who can I turn to to advocate for me in this situation? Once again, I turn to you. Pinnell County recently sent me the Arizona revised statutes I requested as I wanted to know exactly what the responsibilities of the county representatives are under Title 11. I was very surprised with how extensive those responsibilities are, but also with the lack of any mention of a responsibility for a general advocacy for the county's constituents. So again, can I turn to you? I really don't know. But today, I present an article from the April 21st edition of the Arizona Republican that might provide the impetus for that advocacy. It mentions the sad fact that many of today's politicians are responsive not to their constituents but to special interests in their lobbyists, donors, and self-selected citizens. I would add party bosses and their own political ambitions to the list as well. So what can be done in the face of a declining confidence in government and democracy? The authors describe a policymaking simulations program at the University of Maryland where diverse members of the community are brought together to be briefed on policy options, evaluate the pros and cons, and make recommendations that are then expanded through online surveys. The results are then presented in a forum with elected representatives and the constituents involved in the process. Groups such as Voice of the People, Civic Genius, America Talks, and the local media facilitate the process. The program has been a resounding success. A scaled-up program is also being utilized at Stanford University. I see no reason why a program of that nature couldn't be implemented here and this board be the body to do so. I encourage you to investigate its implementation and to find the money, grant, or general to fund it. I would think you have the connections and general knowledge to make this happen, even if it's out of the realm of your normal responsibilities. I leave each of you today with a copy of the article and my email address. I sincerely look forward to your reply. I also think that after listening to today's comments, this program might be a good way to deal with them. Thank you.
Thank you. William Tatlock.
Good morning. Thank you all for your service to the county, and I've lived here in this, out, my address is 27005 East Havelina Drive. I'm a retired police sergeant from Florence, Arizona, also. I've lived out in Havelina Estates since my grandma and grandpa helped build it out there, so 70s and 60s. I wrote to Congress, wrote to, me and my grandma wrote to get phone lines put in out there. So I've been out there since we needed CB radios, four-wheel drives just to drive out there. So I'm used to what we've had to put up with. I commend Larry Vincent and his volunteer fire department for what they have started and done. I've also put out house fires myself out there with my tractor, Mr. on Oxbo, Mr. Honeywell's house was going to burn down one day, and I was the only one that responded. And then finally, Real Metro showed up after I'd put it out, and they still charged him, my understanding this is third-party information, but over $5,000. So I also had a business from 2000, 2009, hauling leach rock. I helped Real Metro try to put in a station out here on 79 next to Arrow Maldiver Park. I invested in rock and stuff for the land development, close to $5,000, was not paid back. They abandoned that project for us to have help as a real metro. So I'm just, I wasn't going to speak here, but I wanted to commend Larry Vincent for coming in, and I support him for doing what he's done, because I've lived here long enough that we are now a county and an area that does need to look at this a little differently because we have more residents. Back in, back in the day, whenever just a few of us lived here, we all took care of each other, but there is a lot more residents out there that need a little bit more help than what just local neighbors can do to help. So I've also spoke against the Town of Florence before for annexing that area. I don't think that's the right area, right thing at this time either, but I think we need to support the volunteer fire department to keep that going. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Lycos Athenassios.
My name is Lycos Athenassios. I live in Paisano Drive. All the other people they spoke, they covered the subject about the fire, fire department. I have only one question. All of you are old enough, and you know the, I think you have enough experience. I want to believe that you run for the office out of love to serve the people. You know that the demographics have been changed. A lot of people move in the area. You have to find solutions to serve the people, not to come to the point, first houses burn, and then we come here to complain. I hope you do your job, or otherwise, don't run again for the office.
That's all the forums I have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mr. Vice Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Brad Miller. I am also a resident of Cactus Forest. Shortly after February 26, 2021, the Pinnell County Communications Consortium, and I have the letter with me right here, signed a, what's called a "Letter of Concurrent." the letter with me right here, signed a, what's called a letter of concurrence. That letter of concurrence is a contract between the Pinal County Sheriff's Office and the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department. In that letter of concurrence, there are mutual agreements, so it's a contract. This particular letter allowed the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department access to the 911 system. That 911 system was activated almost 30 times. South Florence Volunteer Fire Department was called up to 30 different fires and/or emergencies from 2021 until about, about a month or so ago, when they were removed from the 911 system without written notice. On page two of this particular letter, you can read under the parties mutually agreed section that says, "This letter of concurrence may be canceled by either party at any time by 30 days' written notice." That never occurred. Now, our county attorney Kent Volkmer gave an interview to the newspaper saying he was the one that gave the advice to the Pinal County Sheriff's Department to remove the South Florence Volunteer Fire Department from this 911 system. He gave that advice. And the reason why he gave that advice, he said, was because of liability purposes. So ultimately, what our county attorney did was give advice to violate a contract. And I ask you, who's the liability? It appears that our county attorney is, if he's going to be giving that kind of advice. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Acting Chairman. My name is Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. In the invocation we heard, asking for wisdom, this is a moment to seek wisdom. Public safety is a human right throughout the world. Today is Holocaust Memorial Day, Yom HaShua, when we remember that 6 million human beings were murdered in Europe. The dangers to human life, as we've witnessed this morning, are everywhere, including here in Pinal County. The Spanish-American philosopher George Santayana wrote, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Let's remember the past. Let's remember the present. Closer to home here in Arizona, unfortunately, we're seeing a dehumanization of others. We've heard it in this morning's testimony. Let's resolve that we are in a teaching moment and bring healing to our community. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. See someone else making her way up?
My name is Mary Lee, Mary Lee somebody, and I used to live at 178 North Holcomb. I sat and watched my house burn for over four hours and none of you did a thing to stop it. You sat and laughed and said, "Let's watch it burn." That was our home. That was our safe place. How, as you and us humans, can treat other people this way? How do you feel inside, knowing that you killed people, you killed animals? You devastated our lives and for what reason? I have to, in my right mind, try to forgive you because that's the right thing to do. But we lost everything. You put yourself in our shoes and had those police officers sit on a wall and laugh at your devastation. Is that a way to be proud of Florence? If we had had the volunteer fire department there, our house would have been saved. Animals' lives would have been saved. Our lives wouldn't be what they are right now. I just don't understand how you can be so heartless and so cruel. What have we done to you? We worked hard to move out here because we thought it would be a good place to be. We were proud of our home and we were trying to get the inside finished and move on. We lost everything we own. And without the community's help, we wouldn't have clothes on our backs right now, thanks to you. How dare you make that decision to treat us this way? I just hope and pray that you can live every day with this in your hearts and on your shoulders because that's where it lies. And I don't want anyone else to go through this again. It's not fair. It's not fair. I've got a dog back there that's innocent. They're victims of our possession and you, you took, you took that away and you just killed them. You just let them burn. How can you have people in your employ that are heartless and cruel like that? I just don't understand. We should be all in this community together, working together to make it a better place, to make it a good place that people want to come to. But no, you're turning it into something it shouldn't be. This is not a war zone. And our house shouldn't have been targeted and burned.
Okay, we're, we're hearing you and we're going to have some decisions to make.
I hope they're wise decisions because your office lies there, your jobs lie with your decisions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have to say one thing. Thank you all for being here for us. We wouldn't have had anything if it hadn't been for all of you and Mary. Thank you.
My heart broke just listening to this lady.
Can we get your name and?
Regina Frenzy. And I, I'm sorry to say this, but I didn't see any emotions on your faces. It's like you don't care. Am I wrong or am I right? Don't you have feelings for people that go through this? And can't you change everything so we are covered by the fire department? How many fires and how many houses have been burned down for you to decide to do something? If that was your house, your children's house, or one of your children's, God forbid, were burned down, how would you feel? You would feel horrible. Don't you feel horrible for this lady or any other lady like her? And now, remember, election is coming up. And I want you to know, we're too many over there and you are not going, not even one vote because we're very disappointed. What do you have to say for that? I want your answers. What are you going to do if you really think for your, for the people that live around there? We moved from all over the country and we came here. We pay our taxes, real estate taxes, anything you charge us, we pay. Aren't we entitled to have the fire department whenever we need it? What do you have to say? Don't you have any answer to tell me? Because I am very upset. Who's going to answer my questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess I would ask for a point of personal privilege.
Yeah, we will explain that this is not the time when we respond directly to you, to the call to the public. When everyone is done speaking, we'll then address it with the staff.
But you have to work fast.
Yes.
Faster than anything else and cover us and do something about us. We're humans. And unfortunately, if that was a dog that was burned down, you would run faster than if it was a human being. Thank you.
Just very quickly, to respond, I guess as the board and me personally, as the supervisor for the district, when this occurred, when the, the fire department was taking off 911, I called.
Let's wait till all, it's all done and then we'll, is there anyone else?
Supervisors, my name's Gail Hughes. I live at 23166 East Blue Sage Road, Cactus Forest. I had the same questions that other people have had, obviously. How was 911 service, how was 911 service canceled without formal notice? How could something so important as a 911 service be rescinded without the fire department being informed? And then on top of that, if you, the fire department didn't get a 911 call, then why were people not allowed on that property to put out that fire? We've been doing that for years in Cactus Forest before we got this great fire department. This time, residents weren't allowed to put out that fire and that house could have been saved. We need answers. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so now everyone is through. So like we said, the rules of the way the boards are set up, we can't address anyone directly. We can now talk to staff and Mary Ellen, Chris Keller. It's apparent we need to discuss this in whatever format is the most open. I don't know if we have to have an executive session or, if we have executive session, then the folks don't hear what we're discussing. So it would be my preference that we do, guys, get all the facts and all the necessary parties together and then have this back into some discussion. And I believe this all, the emergency service falls under Public Works, so we need to pull, you know, Charles Komet and everyone together on that and then coordinate with the Sheriff's Department, which does not answer to this board other than financially. But definitely very apparent, there's a problem and we need to discuss it. So anyone else want to direct staff?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Vice Chair. For clarity, it would need to be agendized for us to speak to it in an, in an open discussion.
Right.
So a future agenda item is the way I see it.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if I might.
Sure.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Who do you want me to address you?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. You know, there was, these are actually two particular incidences here or situations that have been discussed very openly and are very, should be at the utmost importance to us as a board of supervisors. And so with that being said, and some of the things that have been talked about, I think that we definitely need what you're suggesting in regards to not only this incident but what we're going to be doing in the future, immediate future, to deal with some of the issues at hand. And then also to even expand that to where there's other areas in the county that have a dire need for fire protection, much like this community right here. There are some areas in the Santa Valley area that's, and I, and this is something that I've talked quite a bit about, but I think a comprehensive look at fire protection as a whole throughout the county. Then in addition to the comments that have been made about the LG plant that has been proposed to go in, which is in town of Queen Creek, so I would like to propose that we have a study, a work-study session, bringing in experts that understand, and we've had many questions that the public has asked and that they're concerned with. We've heard some of those here today in regards to that particular plant in particular and that location. And I would like to see that we bring in, for instance, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. These are experts that oversee these type of things. And even the permitting process on this type of a plant and the process that they go through and that they have to go through for public comment and things of that nature. So even our own air quality that we regulate, I'd like to have him a part of that. Even, and then as far as up to state level, I don't know what role the Corporation Commission plays in this and has their involvement in, involved in there. And then there's, you know, for instance, the fire protection, which we've been talking a lot about here. You know, the one that's going to be providing fire protection for that particular area with the LG plant will be the town of Queen Creek. They'll be responsible for that. And so I would like them to come and be a part of that work-study because there's a lot of concern out there that the citizens have and questions that they're giving, given, and we're not the experts here. And so we need individuals that are experts at these areas to come and do an open type session that the concerns of the citizens could be met. And so those are two things that I'd like to see on the future agenda.
Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So upon hearing the end of the, that the dispatch had ended, I contacted Mr. Volkmer, Mr. Lamb and Chief Thomas, and I would agree with the citizen, Mr. Chairman, that we pass this along to the county attorney, or excuse me, the county manager's office to conduct an inquiry to determine how the decision was made, why the decision was made, and make that information available to the public. And I would like these discussions, to the greatest extent possible, to occur in public.
Thank you. So at the end of this meeting, when we do ask for future agenda items, we'll make sure that we reiterate that. Okay, thank you. So moving on to a one-year update on Keep Pinal Pristine with County Attorney Volkmer.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but Tiffany? Can you catch her and tell her that the one item that she spoke of? Can you get her and have her stay here?
That went so long, we'll have a recess after a couple more items.
Vice Chair, would you like me to proceed?
Yes.
Good morning, Board. Kent Volkmer, Pinal County Attorney. Obviously, this is kind of trivial compared to what we just dealt with. Nevertheless, this is- Nevertheless, this is agendized quite some time ago, and my hope is to present to the Board on behalf of the county just an update. If the Board recalls about a year ago, actually, I presented this to the Board, and I showed some pictures out in the desert of couches, of mattresses, of trash bags just littering our beautiful countryside. Following that presentation, this Board actually allocated resources and dedicated resources to addressing that underlying issue, desert dumping in our community. It's been a little less than a year, but we wanted to provide you an update so the Board and the public knows what actually has occurred in the last hour with regards to this. So, here's the problem, we're all aware of it. You know, this, most of these literally are less than a mile from my house. You've got couches, you've got chairs, you've got mattresses. We didn't Photoshop that. There's literally a no dumping sign, and not 40 yards behind the no dumping sign, there's a mattress and just tons of other junk. The reality is, we didn't get into this problem shortly. It wasn't just like, you know, a bad weekend. It wasn't six months. This is years and years and years of accumulation. It's going to take us time to clean up. I know this Board gets pressure. I know this Board hears from frustrated citizens about how, why is there still junk out here? Why is there trash? Why is there furniture? Why is there stuff littering our desert? We're working on it. That's the best I can tell you right now. And I'm going to get into some of the stats. It's not as if we're sitting on your hand. And quite frankly, I was blown away when I get to those just in a minute. But what I'd like to remember, systematic problems require dynamic, multi-partner involvement with long-term, sustainable solutions. This isn't, I can't fix it, Public Works can't fix it, Andy can't fix it there, Joe Ortiz can't fix it. This takes all of us coming together. Working specifically on this problem, we had Public Works, we had community development, we had public health, environmental health, because all of these dump sites pose an environmental health concern to our community. Our office, the Sheriff's Office, the manager's office, Manchu was integral in a number of these meetings. And the first thing we really worked on is a dedicated, one-stop informational shop. So, what I'm showing you is, this is live, it's been live for quite some time, but this is actually linked up to our county website. If you go to pinellcounty.gov, there's a banner where you can click to it. If you type anything about keeping, keep Pinell pristine, if you type in dumping, any of that stuff, this comes up. And what this is really designed to be is, again, just that one-stop shop where anybody has any questions, they have concerns, they can come here. So, you'll see on the left-hand side there, there are six squares or rectangles. Each one of those are a link to a new topic. So, if you're reporting an illegal dump site, so that gives the public the ability to say, hey, you know, I drove in this section, or behind my house, or on my way to work today, I saw this. And what it does is, it gives them the ability to let us know where those are at, so we can schedule some ability to clean up. There's a rewards program, and I'll talk about that just in a moment. There's Pinell County cleanup events. So, those that are interested in events, what's actually going on, what's happening in the future, you can click on that link. Disposal Services, that just gives all the information there. So, there's one place somebody goes. They don't have to say, boy, I forget, am I waste management, am I Republic, am I a private entity? There's one, and based on your location, you can find all the information you need. Talks about our disposal days, and also our Adopt a County Road. We do have people reaching out and say, look, I'd like to do something. We have a lot of retirees here. We have a lot of people that want to give back to the community. This is just an area where they can proceed. There's a number of videos kind of just showing the issue. That's just the bottom half of that same page. This is what clicks. If you go to illegal dump sites, you can see there's a live link, you can click on it. To the right shows you the various cleanup links, or events, excuse me. These are the services that I spoke of. So, there's landfills, where our landfills are. If you need a hazmat pickup, all of those things are listed there. On the right, we simply just have the free disposal days, and I shouldn't say simply, these are a really big deal, but where you can take care of stuff, where they're at, when they're happening, so you can plan ahead. So, the question, I guess you and probably the public really wants to know is, are we really doing anything? And this is what really blew me away. So, since we last presented to this Board, we've held 15 different community cleanups, and there were 717 tons of trash collected. So, let me to put that into perspective. A ton is 2,000 pounds. If the average couch weighs, let's say, 100 pounds, that's 14,000 couches that were pulled out, that were collected, and were properly disposed of. 1,717 tons. It's over a million pounds of trash. These cleanups involve more than 4,400 hours of county workforce labor. The direct cost is well north of a quarter million dollars. We've had nine of these free dump days, hazmat cleanups, where we cover the tipping fees, which means people can drop it off, they don't have to come out of pocket. We'll take those hazardous materials, so they're not dumping them in our desert, they're not letting them rot on their property, they're not completing or creating environmental health concerns. We've partnered with code compliance to facilitate some of these cleanups. Sometimes code compliance comes across the residents and they need help. There's a lot of trash, there's junk, there's an environmental health concern there. We're actually coordinating to make sure we're getting access and addressing those most blighted parts of our community. We've partnered with our local community health organizations, our community organizations. There's a group, I'm going to give a quick shout-out, because I know them, it's the Casco Grand, I think the Road Runners is what they call themselves. It's literally a couple hundred people that live in CG that just about every other Saturday, they decide that there's an area that needs to be picked up, they come together, they pick stuff up. And what we do is, we provide them, again, to cover their tipping fees, so they don't pick the stuff up and have to pay to dump it in trash. We also give them the PPE-type stuff that they need. You know, we want them to have gloves, we want them to have bags, we want them to have the necessary supplies so they don't endanger themselves. Here's the other thing that I think this Board needs to be aware of, and this is one of our biggest frustrations. The vast, and I do mean vast, majority of the dumping that occurs in our county doesn't happen on private property. Happens on state trust land, federal trust land, BLM, forest, national forest, and the reservations. We don't have the authority just to go on to those and clean them up. We're trespassing, because we're going in, we're taking, you know, big machines, we're dropping the big roll-off trailers. We are currently negotiating, and we have made some inroads with them to be able to get access to those, but that is right now what our single greatest concern is. If you call us and say, hey, there's seven couches and 12 bags of trash, and it's right there, we don't have the lawful authority just to walk on and take it off. We have to reach out, we have to figure out whose land it is, then we have to figure out how to get on. And what we've been able to do is actually expedite it with, I believe, the state trust land right now, and we're in the process of the feds, where they're giving us a right of access. So, we will be able to start addressing those much easier. I referenced it earlier, the legal dumping rewards program. I'm going to be very candid with you. I presented it about a year ago, and I said, hey, I've got what I thought was a brilliant idea. If we can have people that see somebody dumping, and they call us, and we're able to arrest or at least cite the person dumping, we can reward them financially for it. We kind of bandied around, how much money should it be? Ultimately, we settled on $500. We thought that that would, one, discourage people from going, but, two, if they see it, to report it. Report to their neighbors, report to somebody else. Those people that are calling and very frustrated would give them an outlet, and hopefully we could catch the people either in the act or be able to prosecute them. As of the end of March, we've only had about 10 reports. And the problem with the most reports, the majority of the reports is, it was a white pickup truck that was going down this road. In Pinell County, a white pickup truck is not very descriptive. No license plate number, not even a description of the driver. There are two that appear viable. There were pictures that were taken. SO is working with us to try and identify who those people are. So, we do have pictures, we do have a license plate, and we are working on accurately trying to do that. But the program has not been the success that I thought it would be. We're still pushing it out. We're certainly not wrapping it up. It's very little harm to the county, because what happens is, if you find them and you report them, and we are able to prosecute, we don't have to convict, just enough that it meets the level where we can bring charges. You would get that money, but the people, if ultimately they are convicted, or they're placed in our diversion program, they're going to go out and do their volunteer time to clean up. So, ultimately, the county would save money on it, because we would be getting 20-plus hours of community service out of this person. What's next? In a perfect world, we just do these free dump days, desert cleanups every day. That'd be ideal. And there's enough junk in our deserts that we could do it. The problem is, each one of these costs about $25,000. The other thing that's crazy is, we can't just leave these giant containers out in the desert or in these locations, because what happens is, they fill up, usually within a few hours. But once they fill up, people don't stop dumping their trash there. Instead, they completely surround the container with other trash. So full of couches, mattresses, and other things that sometimes we can't even get to the container, to load the container, to take it off. We have to take additional containers out just to fill it up. And because they ping in their steel, our residents love to shoot at these things. So, they become hazards, and we show up and there's bullet holes and dents all over it, and it becomes, frankly, a safety hazard. So, when we set these out, we have to set them out, we get eight hours. Public Works drops them in the morning, and they have to come out that afternoon. And frankly, most of the time, we have to keep an eye on them, because we can't just leave them out there. It creates an additional environmental hazard. The other thing that happens is, they dump stuff that they shouldn't be dumping. They dump motor oil, they dump cans of paint, they dump hazardous materials that, again, endangers our community. So, we can do those, but we have to be selective, and we have to be smart in this enforcement, or we create a bigger danger and hazard than we already have. What we have found is, our best success has been partnering with our community organizations. Look, we're the government. We can't solve, we can't be everything to everybody, we can't solve everybody's problems. But when we have partnered with our local community organizations, our local volunteer groups, we've had great success. They're able to get the message out, they're able to flood the area with free labor and get this stuff cleaned up, and they've been outstanding. What we would suggest, and what we would like to see, and again, we're speaking as a whole here, is we would like each district to hold a massive volunteer day, where the district, where our supervisors pick a location, and your office pushes it out and says, we want volunteers to clean up this area. And obviously, we don't want all five of you doing it on the same day, because we have to have county staff there to do it, but we really think you're going to see there's a great turnout. The other thing that does is, it potentially gives us a basis of people that we can rely on in the future. Our hope is, this isn't a one-off, but we can continue to do this, and we can really strategically target areas in the various districts with community workers and the county working together to clean these areas up. We're asking that each district consider creating a volunteer database. What we have heard is, people that do volunteer, they'll say, hey, I want to help, but I don't even know how to really get involved. And the county explored having a master list, but our county decides the state of Connecticut. So, if we have somebody in Supervisor Miller's district saying, I want to volunteer, but I want to send them clear down to Supervisor Kavanaugh's district on the south side of Sandman Well, we might not get the response that we want. Instead, if they're centrally located, we believe there's a lot better opportunity for us to connect people to local cleanups. I think people care more about their local community than they do perhaps an hour or two hours away, depending where you're at in the county. Another suggestion that I'd like you to consider, that is giving every county employee the opportunity to take one day essentially off of their normal work and instead volunteer to cleaning up. We did this a number of years ago, pre-COVID, where we allowed volunteers, county employees to be volunteers for something of their interest. I would suggest that we specifically say, hey, instead of working Friday for Kent in the county attorney's office, you can go pick an area, work with Supervisor Kavanaugh, Supervisor Sertie, find an area, and go clean up that day as part of some of these units. Again, we would ask that you continue to fund the cleanups, the dump days, and the reward programs. The issue is, while we pulled off, again, the equivalent of 14,000 couches, there's still stuff pouring into our deserts. We made a dent. We certainly have not cleaned anything up. If you don't believe me, go drive in some rural areas, go get on a side-by-side and enjoy beautiful Pinell County, and you'll be disgusted what you see. This needs to be a sustained and continued effort. If we just stop it now, there'll be more trash tomorrow than there was when we started. Bottom line, we focus on a new initiative, keeping or keep Pinell pristine. Look, the cleanups have been a smashing success. I mean, there's lines for people to drop this stuff off. It has been well-received by the community. I believe that the supervisors have been happy with it. So, we've had some great success. Again, local community organizations have been outstanding. They're going to be our biggest asset moving forward. We now have the webpage up. Our hope is that nobody can just say, well, I didn't know, I wasn't sure, so it was just easier. I believe Supervisor Goodman, you told a story when you were sitting, I believe, like on your porch, and somebody drove by with a pickup truck, and they just drove down to the end of the lane and just dumped crap out. And if I remember correctly, I think even confronted them, and their response was, well, didn't really know what to do with it. That's no longer an excuse. There is, if you Google it, keep Pinell pristine, illegal dumping in Pinell County, not a really hot topic, you know, when you're searching it on Google. So, that's the first thing that comes up if you just Google it. So, there's no longer an excuse for people to say, oh, I didn't know what my options were. Here's the reality, though. We still have one problem, and that is, we have to change the community's mindset. I'm going to credit Joe Ortiz, who I sat down and had a conversation with a couple weeks ago. I said, Joe, how do we beat this? And he said, it's a mindset thing, Kent. It is a mindset. People don't find it offensive and don't have any qualms about going into the desert and dumping their garbage. We have to change that mindset. As long as that's the mindset, that they can just dump it, it doesn't matter, we're that big, who really cares? We're never going to lick this problem. Our county will continue to combat the issue with hard work education in our partnerships, but it's together that we really need to push this out. And our hope is, by having these community events, that we can continue to clean up, and eventually, we can turn the tide where we're actually pulling more stuff out of the desert than is getting dumped at any given time. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
You kind of trivialized it when you started out, but I believe this can suppress some fires, too, because if you're talking about flammable things being dumped out there, people that may want to party around these messes, so it could help desert fires. As you can see what's going on up north, I mean, it's fire season right now, so.
Supervisor, you're absolutely right. All of this stuff is fuel for fires. I don't mean to speak for him, I don't know if he's here, but I'm sure Chuck Komet would certainly say, please get this junk out of our deserts, because it is fuel for these forests fires. All this stuff is easily flammable. And I apologize, I did not mean to trivialize this or the work. It was just a very heavy meeting beforehand, and I was working for a transition. Clearly, I failed, and I apologize.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kent, a couple of those comments made me laugh. I remember we put a dumpster out in one of my areas late on a Friday afternoon, and then had a crew going out Saturday, and when they got there, it was already full. So, I mean, it's kind of interesting. And changing the mindset goes to the very part of your program for, you know, for a reward. I mean, our society has reached a point where they'll sit on the curb and watch somebody be murdered and not even lift a finger, couldn't care less. I mean, dumping doesn't mean anything to these people. So, that, moving forward from there. So, state land, BLM, national forest, is there a way that we can get, like, a quick permit process? In other words, if we locate something, is it simply, we're going to fax you this, here's the general area, we need to get in there and clean it up, and we're scheduling, you know, next Saturday or two Saturdays from now, that we get approval on a real, you know, timely basis, so it doesn't continue to build up and people... It's just like graffiti. If you remove the graffiti, it kind of slows that down. If we remove the trash as soon as we see it, maybe that'll slow that activity down. Is that something we can work on, or do we have, or can we get?
Vice Chair, Supervisor Miller. We're actually working on just having a standing authority to do it. Instead of a one-off. The issue is for, and I think it may be state trust land, or it may be the feds, but we have two that cover the entirety of the state of Arizona. So, sometimes getting ahold of that person can be very difficult, if they're in Coconino County right now, dealing with other stuffs, or they're in Apache County, wherever they're at. So, what we've actually negotiated, and a shout-out to Kevin Costello in our office, who's really been working on this, giving us actual, just standing agreements, that if this is the purpose that we're doing, we can just go in, maybe shoot them an email and let them know, but we don't need to wait on that response. So, that is actively what we're doing, and we've secured one, and I think we have the framework to do the rest of them. They're very leery to allow the county on their property and just say, yeah, you guys can go willy-nilly, but once we've explained the issue, and frankly, they don't have the resources to clean it up. They want us to clean it up, but then they put these bureaucratic hurdles in our way to get there, so we're working on knocking those down. So, that has been what we've been working on, and we have had some success.
It would be similar to an IGA. It's just like, you know, come on, let us get in here and clean that up.
Exactly.
Cut out a lot of the red tape. So, okay, well, those are my, just off the top of my head thoughts. There's other things I think that we should explore about keeping Pinell County pristine. I think we should look into a voluntary demolition service and some things like that for later discussions, but anyway, you got to stay on it, and I support what you're doing here.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Volker, I was trying to add up the costs of this, and you have a Masters in Finance, as I recall. So, I don't know, have you added up, if we go out in the desert and we collect these items, we're still paying dump fees to dispose of them, right?
Depending on where, a lot of times, we do, the county does have a couple dumps that we own. If we take it to our location, we don't have to really pay the tipping fee, but if we take it to a city of Casco Grand, we would have to pay their fees.
So, rather than have no dumping in the desert, I'm spitballing here, why don't we say, you can dump for free somewhere else and give areas, those who live in unincorporated areas, just like we do the vouchers down in the copper corridor, two or three free two or three free dumps," and it would save all the work of having to go and clean up the desert if they knew, "I don't have to pay and here's the place." Have you considered that or added the math up on that?
Supervisor, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I can tell you that's been a consideration. There is a significant cost to it. If the board's direction was for us to examine the feasibility of that, I'm sure we can sit down and give you a better, what would the real cost of that be? It has been a discussion, but obviously, that would be a large financial commitment, just covering all those fees, and it's something that we would really need the board as an entirety to sort of give it its blessing. But again, if the direction of the board is to examine that, I'm more than willing to work with Public Works, who really is going to have the best estimate on that cost and try and come back to the board and say, "Hey, if we did this, this is really what the dollar figure is going to be, and see if that is something that this board is willing to expend funds on." But I understand that there is a cost-benefit analysis. Oh, Joe's right beside us. Sorry, I didn't realize you were there, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you, we had that program in place for a number of years. I don't know that it curtailed anything. The honest people use it.
Right, right. Well, we do have, like was mentioned, we do have 15 community cleanups where we're going into those communities and allowing to come in and bring their stuff to us, and we take care of the disposal fees for them. So it's kind of what you're talking about there, I guess.
No, not really. My thought is, you know, if people are aware that, number one, they can dump at waste management, we're going to go, we're going to pay for this anyway, we're going to have the labor, you know, we're trying to enforce it mechanisms. I'd like to look at the old program and see, and perhaps with county management, we can do that.
Yeah. It's similar to what you're talking about, maybe the voucher-type program where they can come in whenever. Yeah, that's, that's a high-end solution, but, you know, all it takes is dollars, right?
We'll see.
Yeah, right? Okay. Yeah, whatever we can look into, we can.
Kent left, it looks like it's up to you to close the, oh, there he is, he's hiding behind.
That's all I had. This is not an action item, this is really just an update. We wanted to get in before the board ultimately started making decisions regarding the upcoming annual budget, because if there is additional requests or additional services, if, for example, Supervisor Goodman says, "Kent, I want 10 of these community cleanups in my district alone," well, we're going to have to come up with, you know, $250,000 and there would need to be a financial allocation to offset that cost to the county. So we wanted to just provide an update to the board, allow the board to have the information, to chew on the information, to use it as they see fit. And then again, we do continue to meet, so if there's issues, you're more than welcome to let us know. We'll sit together, and Supervisor Kavanaugh, we're certainly happy to explore that and give you an idea of what potentially that cost could be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chair, if I, just real quick, if I could just add something to this, you know? The bottom line is we're trying to do something about it, bottom line. And we've been doing that for some time now, trying to get a handle on all of this, and that's the bottom line. This does, you know, and we don't need a master's degree in finance to figure that out because we're trying to keep our communities clean, bottom line. And we're not going to, we've got the problem where people are driving down the road and they're throwing garbage off to the side. And so we've got tremendous amount of cleanups along our roads and highways, bottom line. And so when you look at this and all these discussions that we're talking about, the bottom line is we're trying to attack the problem. And I commend you, your staff, and the other departments. Our sheriff's department's been really tremendous about helping us create and even bring people together to go and do these things, so, cleaning up. And so as we further look at the investigate into what we need to do, you know, we're in the right direction. So thank you.
Natasha, I think we have several folks in the audience that are here for consent agenda items. So if I could do consent agenda now and then come back to three and four? I'd like to do that right now. So I'm going to go on to the consent agenda. No one has asked me to pull anything as of yet, but is there a motion on the consent agenda? Or is there anything that anyone would like to have pulled?
Well, I was, I was prepared to have staff speak specifically to items M, N, and O, but I don't see anybody here in the public that really had anything to do that. We're going to put information out about those particular projects, so we really don't need to take the time here.
Okay.
So with that...
With that, will, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
What do you need to ask the public?
Yes.
I'd like to request just pulling up consent Q.
Okay. So now we can make a motion sans Q.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through, how far do we go? A, B, minus Q.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And ayes have it. So back to item Q, discussion approval, disapproval, a final flat for Entrada del Oro. Who is, Roberto, you want to, what are your questions on that?
Roberto Ravelis, Gold Canyon resident. Not a question, Mr. Chairman, but a comment. A small delegation of Gold Canyon residents visited Entrada del Oro a couple of weeks ago in the company of the developer, and we were very favorably impressed by the work that's being done there and by the developer really going the extra mile in inviting residents who were concerned about the hedgehog cactus that's abundant in the area. And the developer actually opened the property to residents who were wanting to remove and replant those hedgehog cacti. And so we wanted to extend a thank you to the developer and commending him and urging other builders when they are developing in the area of the Sonora Desert, that they welcome people onto the property to help make sure that the best possible use is made of the native plants.
Any other species?
No, that's the only one that we were contacted by some people in the area who were concerned, and a very successful transplanting campaign was undertaken.
So I'm going to use this opportunity, you know, there was a controlled burn that shouldn't have happened up Highway 88 a couple of years ago, and I've been hoping that someone comes up with a lot of vegetation because I know there's volunteers that would like to re-vegetate in the museum area on the way to the lake. So we'll keep a lookout for things like this. Hedgehog doesn't really cover a lot of area, like we really need small trees and things like that.
Yes, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can we have a motion on getting Q back on there?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number Q as presented.
Is there a second? Okay, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. So now we're going to go back to the county manager's report. See, I stalled and I gave Leo a chance to get here.
Perfect timing. Thank you, Vice Chairman Sertie. And just have a couple announcements, I guess both relating to the governor's office and Governor Doug Ducey. Just wanted to let you know, he did thank this morning the Pinell County Board of Supervisors for their efforts and for making Nicola Factory a reality here in Coolidge in Pinell County. They are, have kicked off production, they had an event, they have an event that's still going on this morning to celebrate that. They have electric semi-trucks with customer emblems on them already, and they're ready to ship to customers. So they've gone from, you know, desert two years ago to revenue and operations. So congratulations to them, and just wanted to make sure you all know that the governor thanked you this morning. In addition to that, the governor has declared proclamation for the month of April to be county government month, and I was wondering if we could just show that? Yep, thank you, Natasha. And I'd just like to read it and help everybody to understand the importance of the role of the county and what we do here. So Governor Douglas Ducey, State of Arizona proclamation. Whereas counties play an essential role in providing people-centered services by keeping Arizona's community safe and secure and preserving public health and well-being, ensuring public safety and promoting local economies and resiliency. And whereas counties take seriously their leadership role in protecting and enhancing the health, welfare, and safety of citizens in the community and provide the tools to deliver more effective and higher-quality services while containing costs through the efficient use of local tax dollars with the goal to foster economic opportunities. And whereas, with a broad range of responsibilities to residents, county governments uphold a mission to improve lives, strengthen communities, and foster civic engagement by providing public health, justice, safety, infrastructure, transportation, technology, emergency management, and economic services that play a key role in every aspect from residents' daily health to disaster response. And whereas, there are 15 counties in the state of Arizona responsible for and serving the needs of every resident of the state. And whereas, Arizona counties reflect the wide diversity of people, culture, and landscape in our state. Now therefore, I, Douglas A. Ducey, Governor of the State of Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as county government month in recognition of the leadership, innovation, and invaluable services provided by all Arizona counties. Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Purchasing Vision Report.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. I am Tiara Peterson, purchasing manager for Pinell County, and this is your purchasing report for April 27, 2022. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 180924 for night vision equipment. We recommend approval of amendment number three to exercise the optional extension period beginning May 29, 2022. With Elbit Systems of America Night Vision LLC, this contract is used by the sheriff's office. RFP 181923 for drug testing services. We recommend approval of amendment number five to exercise the optional extension period from May 8, 2022 through May 7, 2023. With Corident Health Solutions, this contract is also used by the sheriff's office. RFP 182824 for firearms accessories and parts. We recommend approval of amendment number three to exercise the optional extension period beginning May 8, 2022. With Cat Arms LLC, DBA, Psionic Weapon Systems, and Pro Force Law Enforcement, this contract is used by PCSO. IFB 190324 for aggregate slurry and Portland cement. We recommend approval of amendment number three for a price increase requested by Vulcan Materials for the Hidden Valley Maintenance Area. This contract is used by Public Works. IFB 211222, sorry, IFB 211122 for Sand Manual and Dudleyville Community Park Improvement Projects. We recommend approval of amendment number two requesting an extension of 180 calendar days due to continued material delays. If approved, the new term will extend through November 13, 2022, and this contract is used by Open Space and Trails. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchase made. PO 247028 with Carisoft Technology Corp. In the amount of $151,395.39 for investigative intelligence software used by the sheriff's office. And finally, the board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchase. Requisitions 163979 and 163980 for CCS Presentation Systems for a total amount of $458,635.10 for audiovisual presentation systems for the new EOC and Civil. And this is a joint project between Public Works and Community Development. And that concludes your purchasing division report for April 27, 2022.
Any questions or discussion? Not seeing any, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated April 27, 2022.
Is there a second? Here a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to recess the regular meeting for about five minutes. Okay, since the meeting's already recessed, we're going to come back out of that and we're going to go right into the sewer district. And we have the consent agenda. Actually, we have motions. So Natasha, is this all consent or is this an actual motion on an item?
Chairman, they're actual consent, so we can just have one motion on a consent agenda if nothing is pulled.
Okay, if there's no discussion, then I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve items A and B on the flood, excuse me, the sanitary district.
Yes, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The motion carries. I'll then convene that meeting and go back into the regular meeting. We're on item number seven, discussion approval to spend additional time for the appeals process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is, this is the situation where the county attorney's office, you know, steps aside and you have separate outside counsel to represent the board. Andrew McGuire will be sitting in our, in my seat, and the reason for that is because the county attorney's office is representing the departments on behalf of this appeal. So let me have Andy take my spot.
Okay. So the presenter is Craig Cameron.
Good morning, Your Honor. Craig Cameron, behalf of Pinell County Attorney's Office for the Code Compliance Board and Hearing Office. I'm here with John Webster, who's going to be representing Ms. Koenig for the purposes of the proceedings. Anyway, this is a request to, for an extension of time or to leave to file a late filing, a memorandum. And I just wanted to bring out to the court, or the board, that the memorandum on appeal is to be used for a guide, that's its purpose. So you can follow through with the record that's been presented. The record that you receive is what you have to go with. So there's no new material that needs to be presented. It's just so you can have a little bit better focus. It also provides the opposing party some clarity on what our arguments are going to be at the appeal hearing that will, would currently is set for May 18. So today's hearing is fairly narrow. It's a question of whether or not the board would allow a late filing to be made for this particular appeal. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Webster for his perspective.
I'm appreciative of the Board of Supervisors being the direct connection with citizens and the job you guys are doing is not an easy job, as shown by the earlier discussions. In this matter, we are, we are working with the county. Mary is working with the county to bring about resolution. We have, we have been working with the building department, code enforcement department, bringing about permitting process. I appreciate that the, I believe the clerk of the board asked for an extension to the memorandum filing so that Mary's memorandum could be put in your hands. In that process, I looked into the laws of the, of the process of the hearing, and I came up with 27.5.1. 27.5.1 indicates to me that the hearing office had 30 calendar days to put the appeals packet in the hands of the supervisors, and the packet was placed in the hands of the supervisor 63 calendar days after the appeal was filed for. So I would like the Board of Supervisors to consider vacating the entire judgment and setting aside based on 27.5.1 because what came first, the chicken or the egg? The response to the appeal process came before the need for the response of a memorandum. I am grateful that the supervisors will consider the extension to the memorandum filing. But I also wanted to point out that, that procedural 27.5.1, and I've got a copy of that.
From policies and procedures.
So all we're doing today is granting extra time. We're not making a decision on any item.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board, that's correct. Your sole decision today is to grant the extension to essentially close business today that will allow any memorandum that are filed up until that point to be considered timely for your later in May, I think it's the 18th hearing.
Yes. Of course, I feel it's our job to represent and give the citizens every chance they have to represent themselves. So is there any discussion? If not, I'll...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you have a response to the 27.5.1 procedure then?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, that's not our agendized item this afternoon, and so if you would like us to provide you...
So we shouldn't consider it?
No, you shouldn't consider that today, but if you'd like us to provide you with feedback before the May 18th, we'll be happy to.
So I'm asking for a motion to extend the time.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we extend the time as written in item number seven.
I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes. So, thank you. So item number eight looks to be a similar type appeal. This is James Mitchell.
Yes, Vice Chair of Certi. Yeah, essentially, Vice Chair Certi, members of the Board. My name's Jim Mitchell, Deputy County Attorney with the Pinellas County Attorney's Office, and essentially, it's the same issue we just heard. We attempted to file memo of appeal. It was one day late, and so it was returned to us, and we're simply asking the Board for a little more time to get that submitted. Essentially, just like Mr. Cameron said, for the Board's benefit of having a summary of the issues in front of you, for being able to make a decision on the appeal.
And we want to make every opportunity we can to do the right decision, so that extra day and extra time means a lot, so... Is there any more discussion on this item? No, I think it's the same situation. I'll ask for another motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number eight as presented.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Discussion approval or disapproval of recommendation to the Liquor Board for denim and diamonds. James Allen or Tasha Spears?
Hi, good morning, Board. Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Jim Allen. I'm a building official. The recommended for the denial was the kind of Gilbert History. The applicant for the special event permit was approved because they met the number five for the permanent installed fencing or the controlled area for alcohol. However, the same submittal was submitted for the permanent extension of premises, which when, after the event, there would not be any fences installed. It would just be an alfalfa field at that point. So based on the Department of Liquor license requirements of Rule Number 19105 in front of you, just 105, it's very clear about number five with the fencing as well as seven. The licensee demonstrates control of taking of the liquor outside the non-contagious area. So also under ARS statutes, let me pull my notes up here.
Can I interrupt while you're looking for that?
Sure.
Is this in this town of Florence?
No, this is in the county, sir.
Okay.
It's at the Country Thunder property, basically.
All right, so even though it says Florence, it is not in the city limits?
That is correct. So basically, under the ARS statute 4-203.02, it talks about physical locations that this is not a, I'll give you a little description, there is no legal premises on this property for alcohol. There was an existing bar at the time. It's no longer an operational, so there is no existing premises. So the Department of Liquor License allows for extended premises for special events throughout the year, but it has to meet the certain guidelines. So without having an actual permanent licensed facility, it does not meet the requirements for a permanent extension premises, which has a guidelines of no more than 30 feet away from the actual licensed premises. So that was my grounds for the denial, based on the ARS statutes and the Department of Liquor License Control.
In my experience with city government, you always get the fire department and law enforcement to give their opinion. Do they weigh in on this, or is this totally your decision?
Sir, as the Fire Marshal for Pinellas County, this was based on my denial of it. It came to my desk to recommend for recommendation. This is my recommendation on it, and we could take it to the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department and have them weigh in on it as well. I have not done that, and I apologize if that's the direction, but I could certainly look into that.
So, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Well, I just want to ask the question, because I think I know the answer, but even if we deny it, the state has the ability to approve it. Doesn't mean they will, and I think there's strong reason not to approve this one. I mean, not having a facility and, but I want to be clear that the audience knows that we're not the last say of this application, if I'm correct.
That is correct. On the second page of the application for extension, it specifies down at the bottom that, let me get the words here, "After completion, before submittal, Department of Liquor, please take this application to your local board supervisor, city council designated for their recommendation. This recommendation is not binding on the Department of Liquor." So that gives them authority to override what our decisions are.
Whatever our decision is. I always want to make sure that the public understands that.
One thing I'd like to bring to attention is, on the very bottom of the application form, on page one of that, it has a number 12 or important. It says attachment of the revised floor plan. So basically, and what this would apply to is if it's inside of a building, but in the area what we're looking at for the site plan, it's not clearly depicted based on what the site plan that was submitted shows it during the event with all the fences and gates up. When the actual site will not have that, it's actually just an alfalfa field with no fencing around it because it was a temporary event. So it clearly mentions that if it's not a clear and designated, the extension outlined for the extension premises, they won't accept the application. So it doesn't meet that as well.
So the reasoning is someone could take a drink and just keep walking and walking and not be contained in the area where they can be?
That is correct, sir. There's no area for that. Designated.
Even though alfalfa fields are usually pretty safe, it's a good place to fall down.
That is correct, sir. That is correct. But there'll be no, for law enforcement or for liquor license control, there would be no perimeter, set perimeters, is what the idea of the fencing is. Again, it met the requirements for special events, so that was not an issue. It was for the permanent portion. It was where the denial was for.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just looked at this property, and it's zoned agricultural. Can you have a bar on agricultural property, or is that a...
So it's quite a long story with that property. It was agriculture begin with. There was a lot of structures that were put in under an ag exempt, and then once certain structures were put in, the owner at that time converted it to commercial. So there was a commercial bar. Used to be known as, I believe, Moonshine Willie's was the name of it, and it was no longer an operational bar, so there is no permanent premises or permanent license that applies to this property. So again, that would be the second part of the denial on that.
There are some farmers that they have their own bar out there on their property, and it's because the alfalfa field is a safe place, so...
Right.
Is there any more discussion or questions? Ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we deny item number nine as presented.
Is there a second?
Chair?
Yes.
Goodman, in that motion, if you can just state disapproval with the two memos that's attached, so that I can have that justification to send to the state.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny item number nine. With the, disapproval as presented with the attached building safety, environmental health memos attached to those. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, I almost always vote for these, but in this situation, I think they need to do a better job next time, because we do one events like this. We just want it to be safe. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 10, Public Hearing on Discussion Approval of Resolution Number, a big, long number for an abandonment of an easement. Celeste.
Good morning, Vice Chairman, Chair, members of the Board. Celeste Garza, Assistant County Engineer with Public Works, here to present item 10 in extinguishment of a portion of Saguaro Drive located in the Pachi Junction area. Saguaro's located north of McKellips and west of the Ironwood Drive alignment, south of the gold mines. The Foster family would like more area to be able to build their home. I'm trying to get to the next slide here. There we go. So there's a significant wash that kind of crosses the Moon Vista alignment near their property, and they'd like a larger building envelope to build their house. There's no access issues. Most folks access off of Saddlebutte or Moon Vista, and all the surrounding property owners have signed in agreements with the abandonment, and utilities have been notified, so they are in agreement with losing this 33 feet for the future. I couldn't get to, oop, couldn't get to exactly the property, but this is a shot from the Saddlebutte alignment looking south. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or discussion? I don't see any, so I'll ask for a motion.
Move that...
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Well, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and now ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 10 as presented.
Second.
I believe this is item number, it is item 10, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Mr. Chairman, it says recommendation with four stipulations. I think we need to... That's on 11. Yeah. Oh, forgive me. Sorry, I put the glasses back on.
Moving on to item 11, S is for Circle K. Evan.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Mr. Vice Chair, I guess, chair is missing. Good morning. My name is Evan Evangelopoulos, here with Pinellas County Planning, and today I will be presenting to you the Circle K rezoning in the city of, right outside the city of Casa Grant. The case is PZ 04321, and it's an approval of rezoning from C2 and CB1. There's two parcels there combined right now to C3, into general commercial zoning district of two continuous parcels. And the owner is Circle K Stores. The location is adjacent to the city of Casa Grant in the southwest corner of East Hopi Drive and Arizona State Route 387, and the applicant is Circle K Stores and Jill Kaiser. This is the approximate location within the county. The vicinity map, it's directly on Pinellas Avenue. Close up in aerial, you can see the city of Casa Grant and the two parcels being rezoned. This is the condition of the two parcels pretty much right now. There's one shed over there. This was an old residence that was burnt down a few years ago. Currently, it's within the mid-intensity activity center of the comprehensive plan, so it's an allowed use within there. And here's the current zoning of the parcels C2 and CB1. One of them, the C2, was rezoned in 2019, the CB1 back in 1996. And the proposed rezoning is C3 for both parcels. This is a site layout. I have a close up, I think, of that. There it is. And it's for a car wash, gas station, and a convenience store. I would say typical layout for a Circle K store. And before I go there, I just want to let you know, this is the storage facility directly south of the parcel. This is looking north, you can see Pinellas Avenue. This is Hopi. And north across Hopi Drive, this is looking south. That's Pinellas Avenue. You can see the storage facility over there. And also along Pinellas Avenue. Across Pinellas Avenue, there's scattered residential development, and actually, Hopi Drive continues as a dirt road across the street. Another view of east, view of the west again. This is the storage facility over there. This is the remnant shed. This is the notch to the southeast. It's a communications facility area. Was along Hopi Drive. There's a wash, a channel here. Came up in the PNZ meeting. This is the channel, this is outside the property, I have to remind you. And this is how, what the channel looks like from within the property. And items for the Board of Supervisors consideration, the request is for a rezoning, and one letter of concern has been received till now. The property has legal access. It's located within the mid-intensity activity center of the comprehensive plan and complies with all the requirements. And granting of the rezoning will require, after the time of zoning approval, that the applicant owner submit and secure from the applicable inappropriate federal, state, county, and local regulatory agencies all required applications, plans, permits, supporting documentation, and approvals, in this case, a site plan, along with engineering documents and drainage documents and so on. And request is for approval with four stipulations. And I have the stipulations here. I'm not going to read it unless you ask me to. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that you received a letter of concern?
Yes.
Can you share the...
Yes, it is within the PNZ staff report, and it was about the channel.
Do you recall the name?
Oh, it's not the adjacent neighbor, the neighbor immediately to the adjacent neighbor.
Mr. Hedquist?
I think so. And I don't think he's here right now, but he spoke last time at the PNZ meeting, and there was a response by the Flooding Department of Pinellas County.
Right.
The response is included in the PNZ staff report. That's included in the packet. So the general concern is that the channel sometimes overflows and sometimes overflows downstream some of the properties. And also, the concern was that the channel forms a couple of right angle corners, and that obstructs the flow of the water. So that was the concern, but again, the channel is outside the property. It has been addressed by Pinellas County in the past also. And as far as I remember, Josh Plum from the Flooding Department saying that there's so much the county can do to address these flooding issues, because after a certain point, it becomes way too expensive for the county to address this. This is a wash that comes from the north.
Right, and I'm going to opine on this just for a minute so that it's on the record.
Sure.
We addressed the issue with the landowner several years ago back. We actually built a retention, detention or retention, I can't remember which, basin... We actually built a retention, detention or retention, I can't remember which, basin to the north of it. Since that's been done, I don't know of any flooding that has taken place there. Of course, we haven't had any rain to really maybe measure that by. However, the county had done some mitigation to, to address those concerns going forward. So, and again, I just want to make that clear, that the county has done what they can do and, and what the landowner would allow us and agree to, so, at the time. And so, I do want it to be known that the county has addressed that issue in the past. So, and, and I'm sure that this project will require its own retention of the water and everything that, that our standards require of any, any project being built.
If you see on the site plan here, there's a retention basin on the west, on the west side.
Again, it's for the record. It's the reason I brought that up.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on it? Not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing. And is there any more discussion? If not, ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as presented with the four stipulations.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12, regarding a non-major comprehensive plan, Sangita.
Good morning, Vice Chair and Board Members. Sangita Deuker presenting the next three cases, item 13, sorry, 12, 13, and 14. The first one is a non-major comprehensive plan amendment. And the next two follows with the rezon and the pad overlay for the same case.
But we do have separate votes on all of these, so we will have to look at them individually, but...
That's correct.
You're gonna present on all of them now?
Yes, that's correct. So, the case, PZPA 02621, is the non-major comprehensive plan amendment for redesignating 32.38 acres from suburban neighborhood and land use designation to employment center. Following the case is the rezon, and the rezon is for, for the same area, 32.38 acres from CI1, which is light industry and warehouse zone, to I3, an industrial zoning district, allowing the construction of a wastewater treatment facility. This has an underlying case, which is the PZ 03699 and PZPD 3699. So, basically, the last one is the PZPD, which is amending the pad overlay for this case, the older case. And again, that is to be able to modify the original pad development standards for the same facility for the wastewater treatment plant, and is situated in south of East Judd Road, east of Union Pacific Railroad, in the Santan Valley area of Penala County. The applicant is Epcor Land Owner, and Robert Longacre from WLB Group is the applicant. This is the county map showing the location of this project, and one can see that is in the northern portion in the Queen Creek area. Santan Valley, sorry. The vicinity map, again, showing the, the location of this with a triangular red parcel, and one can see that it's divided between, by the Union Pacific Railroad. The Copper Basin Pad developed already on opposite side of the Union Pacific Railroad, and that is to the western portion, a state land surrounding the northern and the eastern, southern portion of this parcel. The aerial map showing the subject site, shown in yellow dotted line, and one can see that it is pretty much undeveloped at this point in time. And access to the site currently is from the CRR Road, from the northern portion, again, offsetting from the Judd Road. The development of the Copper Basin Pad, the residential development, has already happened, which is to the western portion opposite of the Union Pacific Railroad. Again, a zoomed-down map showing the same. It consists of two parcels. The current land use designation is suburban neighborhood, and proposed is the employment This is the current comprehensive plan, and showing the suburban neighborhood changing and proposed to the employment center, that shown, that portion shown is the triangular The current zoning that is being there is the light industry and warehouse zone, and the blue hatched portion shows the parcels, the two parcels. Again, the zoomed-down zoning showing the state land to the northeast, and the residential across the Union Pacific Railroad, which is already developed. This is the overall site plan, showing the, a draft layout of this, how they have planned to, for the wastewater treatment plant. And can see that the proposed ingress, egress is only from Sierra Vista Drive from the north portion. Is there a pointer to this? There's no pointer, right? Okay. So, basically, the green line shows the buffer that has been created all around the site, which is the landscape buffer planned for 15 feet all around the parcel. There is also a buffer, which is the trail that goes along the Union Pacific Railroad, which is, I'm sorry. Which is, which is dividing the residential area and has a significant barrier, which is, you can see, it's around 425 feet, with 350 feet from the edge of the residential development, you know, compound wall, to the, to the green line, which is the industrial buffer shown. The detail of this is, as I said, the access is only from the northern portion. This is not going to be accessed by general public. This is only going to be accessed by people who work to this, on this wastewater treatment plant. Why is this not working? Okay. So, subject site details, 32.38 acres proposed to be rezoned to I3 pad for the wastewater treatment facility, 15 feet landscape buffer to be provided on all sides of the parcel with an eight-foot block wall, which is isolating physically the whole site. Site has a lower elevation from surrounding parcels, taking advantage of the gravity to do the pumping. Minimum traffic with no pedestrian access that is going to be allowed. Access is from Sierra Vista Drive from the northeast corner of this parcel. There's a multi-use trail corridor to the west of the parcel to be developed and dedicated to the county. Some pictures taken from the north, looking into the property. To the south, again, the boats and the notice being done on the site. Looking towards the east and towards the west. Now, this is the portion which is already having, existing some, I would say, trees. And beyond that is the residential development that has already occurred of the Copper Basin Pad. And it already is at a distance, you can just see a very fine profile of the houses.
So, real quick, go back to that picture.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Sure.
So, just beyond those trees is the railroad tracks, correct?
That's correct. And beyond that is the housing.
And you're standing on the, you're, you're standing on the property itself.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so just on the other side of those railroad tracks, within that distance, is the homes?
Yes, but there is almost a 350...
Correct.
Yes.
But we can't even, okay.
Some items for consideration, as talked about zoning, subject site is zoned as CI1 pad, light industry zone, and the new zone would be I3 pad. There's a visual barrier, although the wastewater treatment plant, the parcel is separated from the residential development of the pad physically by the railroad, and additional 15 feet landscape all around the site. The multi-use trail also furthers the distance between the residential development and the wastewater treatment plant. Under the regional plan, under Section 208, back in 1977 Clean Water Act, in 1978, developed the regional plan where the subject site was planned for the wastewater treatment plant. At that point in time, Johnson's Utility LLC was the owner. The current owner, Epcor, would like to build this plan consistent with the state plan that was planned earlier. This is also going to replace the Section 11 wastewater treatment plant, which has been non-compliant for years, and this is going to replace that and serve the area and the residents in and around. There were some common concerns that we received from neighboring land or property owners, and concerns were, were of odor, unpleasant smell, air quality, reduction in property values, noise, soil contamination, pollution due to leakage, quality of life, visualized sore, and traffic. We also received four letters of support and multiple emails opposing the proposal for the wastewater treatment plan. Staff recommends approval for all the three cases. There were no stipulations for PZPA, which is the non-major comprehensive plan amendment, two stipulations for the rezon, and 28 stipulations for the pad overlay. There were updates that were made for stipulations 12, 16, and 20 to read as follows. Stipulation 12 was regarding noise control ordinance per ADEQ guidelines. The updated stipulation 12 to be read as. Applicant to follow noise control ordinance per ADEQ guidelines. Applicant shall provide the county with ambient noise studies from the site prior to construction and post-construction plant operations. Shall not increase and pre-construction ambient noise levels by more than 10 dB using the A weighted scale. Nor shall noise exceed 65 dpa as measured from industrial zone property line. For the purposes of this stipulation, ambient noise means all, the all-encompassing noise associated with given environment being usually a composite of sounds from many sources near and far. Ambient noise level is the level obtained when the noise level is averaged over a period of 15 minutes without inclusion of noise from isolated identifiable sources by the use of LEQ levels at the location and time of the day near, at that which comparison is to be made. So, that was the update. It does follow the ADEQ guidelines, however, more specific was what was drafted by staff and the experts in this field. Stipulation 16 was updated, there was, that was a typo. I'm rereading stipulation 16 to read that applicant and property owner shall meet the requirements for the regional trail design as specified in the Open Space and Recreation Area Manual, and is responsible for construction of the trail and trail width of 30 feet, and the tread of 8 to 10 feet, and any all details as directed by the Penala County Open Space and Trails Director. And stipulation 20 is expanding the same aspect of applying for a major comp, pad amendment, was updated to read as. Proposed changes to the approved Exhibit E site plan would be reviewed by the Penala County in accordance with Chapter 2.175.090 of the Penala County Development Services Code to determine if a proposed change has meet the criteria for an administrative pad amendment or a major pad amendment. Those were the changes that were, were updated for those three stipulations. I'm open for any questions, and we also have the applicant who would like to make a presentation.
Mr. Miller.
Real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for a couple of quick questions. Back to 16, stipulation 16, for construction of the trails with, within 30 feet. I just wanted to see where we were with the open space and trails there, again, so I better understand that.
So, in the detailed packet, Board Member, we do have the sections that have been shown how the developer is going to develop this. There was a typo in that made by staff, and that's what has been corrected for this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, on the noise, do they, do they, do they do sound studies against the railroad there? I mean, that's gonna make more noise than a treatment plant, I would think.
So, I would want the applicant to talk more on this, and we have requested, we have told them that the ambient noise study should be made. There were issues and concerns for the plant making the noise, and so, at least for the plant, that would be done, so.
Okay, I, I mean, because I don't want, the plant may be fine, I don't want people complaining about the plant if it's the train.
Yes.
So, there has to be some delineation between the two. Is that okay, Brown?
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman, Supervisor, we spent a lot of time on, on this stipulation. If, if you could read the stipulation, or if you've seen the stipulation as it was written before, that left the applicant in a position where it would be almost physically impossible to be able to provide an industrial site without contributing any noise. As you know, there's blowers and pumps and air filtration systems that are, that are part of these plants that, that generate at least some impact to noise. We, I work with the legal team to be able to balance what's requiring, required in our ordinance, as well as what will be required by ADEQ, and try to make sense of what is called a LEQ level, or an average sound level. And the reason that we included that last sentence, Supervisor, was to clarify that those LEQ levels will be measured and balanced on a 15-minute period where it's isolated from an identifiable source. So, we won't include a train as part of, of doing that noise study, and we'll work with the applicant to make sure that the processes that are put in place do not exceed the ambient levels by more than 10 dB or decibels, on the DB, on the DBA scale, which is an average dB.
Yeah. Okay, I just saw potential there of conflict and possible problems moving forward, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, there's a presentation from the builder?
Good afternoon, Vice Chairman, members of the Board. Gary Hayes on behalf of Epcor. I have with me today Christina Shane, who's the engineer for the project, and Rebecca Sinholm, who is the Director of Community Relations for Epcor. I may truncate my presentation a little bit, you've had a long meeting, but I do want to, if I could, address Supervisor Miller's first comment, then get into my presentation. And Supervisor Miller, you had the exact same thing I was thinking, as you usually do. And I chatted with your staff, we worked through it, and I have to say, as always, your staff always delivers, always provides great customer service, and I want to thank them for their help in getting us to this position today. And, and that was our concern. I mean, you're going to hear potentially, maybe, a dishwasher at the, the actual wall, less at the property line. So, the first iteration said you couldn't have anything, and we're like, guys, we have to have something. So, we worked together, we got it, and, and we're supportive of, of all the stipulations and of the staff report. I think Sangita and Steve and everybody did a great job, and I do appreciate that. We're here, you guys know better than I do why we're here. Supervisor Goodman's leadership in raising his hand and saying, guys, we got a problem here, is part and parcel why Epcor... here, is part and parcel why Epcor is here today. And what we're here today to do is bring this utility into the 21st century and the 22nd century and further, because what we are fixing today is Section 11. And I will just click to move? Okay. I will go through this just briefly, because I know that you have a lot on your agenda. So this is the wastewater service area, you see the Future Copper Basin Water Reclamation Facility there. You also see in blue, Section 11. Section 11 looks like this. We are required, under an ADEQ consent decree, to take care of this. This plant does that. As you also may have heard in the stipulations about any expansions of the plant, we are currently asking today for approval up to 12 MGD. We're going to start at 3, move to 6, move to 9, then move to 12. 12 MGD will take care of this community for decades to come, which is what's needed today. And Sanghita discussed about the CAG Amendment, we went through some of the location, but I think, in my mind, what I think is, we did have a lot of neighborhood outreach, several community meetings, met with the Board of Directors of Copper Basin, had a website designed for this, set up emails just for this project to try and make sure everybody knew what was happening and why it was happening. And Epcor is very proud of how they run systems. They're very proud of how they operate systems, and I think the citizens out here have seen a difference, night and day difference, from the time Epcor took over as Interim Manager. But what I want you guys to look at in front of you today is, the proof is in the pudding. What you see on your left is the Verrado Water Reclamation Facility. It's been in operation for over 12 years. It is closer to homes by almost 70 feet than what we're proposing here. There is no railroad tracks, there's not going to be a trail, there's not all the things that we're doing in this location that's happening there. And I will tell you, having been there, and I think some other people have as well, you can't even tell there's a water reclamation facility there, which is actually what we want to be. We're not, we actually don't want people to know, hey, on the other side of that wall, this is what we do. When I showed you the pictures of Section 11, people know for a long way around what's happening there, because it's not what you guys need. So what we're trying to do is bring you a state-of-the-art, world-class facility to serve the residents of Penalt County. And that's really all I have, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Are there any questions?
Okay. Just a few comments more than anything, and that is that, you know, as I'm looking at the 28 stipulations, this is something that Epcor, I think, has been working quite at length with our staff and with our citizens, because quite honestly, all they've had everything to compare it to is Johnson Utilities, and Section 11 was one of them. And so many of the, excuse me, the fears and the concerns of the citizens there in Copper Basin in particular, the reference is Section 11. And so a lot of effort has been done on Epcor's, even to the point where they've taken citizens to other locations that they've had, or that they have, that they manage over in Surprise, for instance. You didn't even know the facility was actually there. It does need some landscaping, though, just so you know.
Duly noted, Supervisor. That's the picture.
No, that one over there.
Oh, right.
But we need it, too. That's what we need. And we also need you to finish your fence up around the main yard there off of Hunt Highway, just putting a plug in for that. But the bottom line is, is that what you're doing and what we're working on is, we need to add to the community as far as beautification. And there's a lot of other things that are coming down the pipeline that we're going to be asking you about with the parks, and it's good to see that you're doing the open space and trails, but there's some immediate needs for parks and recreation right now. So with this state-of-the-art type of facility that you're talking about, it's going to be, there's a lot of, we're actually going to be able to use that reclaimed water in the entire region there, that we haven't been able to do in the past. And so, yeah, I appreciate everything that you're doing in the 28 stipulations. I haven't had a chance to really look at them quite in depth, but I have full confidence in our staff, and they knew exactly what we were looking for, so.
And through the Vice Chair Supervisor Goodman, trust me, your staff has spent a lot of time on it, we've spent a lot of time working with them to get something to you that we're proud of, and I think staff will tell you they're proud of it as well. Epcor wants to collaborate, and I think you've seen that since we've been here, and we really do appreciate your leadership in this area about getting this, citizens what they deserve, which is safe, reliable utility service. This also, which we haven't even discussed yet, from an economic development standpoint, this opens the gates again, because for the longest time, we've had constraints on your citizens because there's not the ability to have more wastewater. This allows that to continue. This allows this area to continue to keep up with the growth that it deserves.
Okay, thank you.
Chris Keller, I know we have individual votes on these, but can I do a public hearing on all three?
Yes, you could.
All right, these three items are a public hearing, and would anyone like to comment on them? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a vote on the first item, which is 12.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve as presented with no stipulations.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have that one. On to item number 13. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented with two stipulations.
Second.
Second on the two stipulation and the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have that one as well. And on to number 14.
Can we have the verbiage on the changes, Mr. Chair, before?
They're in there. They aren't here, are they?
Okay. Well, do we need to specifically read?
No.
Those particular stipulations, the changes?
Sanghita read the actual stipulations.
Okay, I was a little bit worried about if I had to read those or not, so.
Yes, Sanghita stated it verbatim for the record.
Okay, so we're good to go there. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve zoning case PZPD 051-21, an amendment to a planned area development with the 28 stipulations recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but with the modified versions of the stipulations 12, 16, and 20 as read into the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 15, which is on the agenda, requires a unanimous vote, and we are a person short, so I'm going to ask for a motion to continue it.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to continue item number 15 to the May 4th Board of Supervisors meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so that was, we continued. A work session item on this complex.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Archie.
Mr. Vice Chairman. Hey, Archie. I was just going to say that we're bringing this back as requested. We made some revisions, we wanted to give you some more information related to things like parking and cost benefit and a plan for the future, so we're bringing this back as requested.
Okay, Archie.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. We are presenting here the details, and to answer your questions regarding the proposed new administration building that will house several departments and three departments that includes elected officials, run by elected officials, which is the assessors, recorders, and treasurers, and we will present to you in details, and feel free to ask any question during the presentation. I will call on the architect, Mr. Larry Smith, to give you some details why we are proposing a single building instead of renovating the existing that we have, and provide you enough details to move forward on the project. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, Supervisors, pleasure to be here this afternoon. Larry Smith with DLR Group, and we'll keep this kind of short, because it was, you know, follow-up from our work session from several weeks ago. So what I wanted to jump right into was the lifecycle cost analysis that was requested, and unfortunately, it's at the end of the presentation here. Bear with me for a second. Let's see here. Here we go. Basically, and this was in your information packet, and I just wanted, this is the highlights of that lifecycle cost analysis. And so what we're comparing here is the renovation of buildings D and E against a new building that would replace those buildings, as well as put other departments in there. And for the sake of comparing apples to apples, we looked at both of these as being 72,000 square feet, so the two existing buildings, plus some modifications and additions that would be needed to meet the needs of all the departments that we're looking at. So a couple of big takeaways here is, what's common in lifecycle cost analysis is for renovation projects, that basically that life is calculated at about 20 years. With new buildings, it's calculated at 30 years. So that's a big sort of difference, so to speak, that gets to the bottom line here. The other big item is energy, annual energy cost. We did an energy audit on the existing buildings, as well as comparing that to a new building, and the energy consumption annually is approximately twice as much for the renovated projects for the existing buildings. And that's based on, you know, insulation issues, piping, you know, kind of looking at the entire building, so to speak. And so that's an ongoing cost that would be for the life of these buildings. The capital development cost, and we can go into detail on that if you'd like on another slide, but basically, the full capital development cost for the renovation options is about 28 million, almost 29. The new project would be in the range of about 33 million. So it is, it's definitely, you know, that $4 or $5 million more expensive initially upfront for capital development. Operation and maintenance cost, ongoing, as a person would imagine, it's more for the renovation project, because in the renovation, you're not replacing everything. So there's, you know, there's pipes underground, there's buried things that are sufficient to be used, but those are going to require some more maintenance and so forth over time, as opposed to, you know, starting out with a brand-new building. And that's similar to repair and replacement cost, and we've done some calculations based as backup for that on the information that we've obtained in looking at the building. And then a minor item that's a salvage value, and is common in lifecycle cost analysis at the end of life, there's salvage value to both projects. So the interesting bottom line here is, is that in today's, this present value cost, which is kind of the bottom-line analysis for these facilities, in current dollars, today's dollars, looking at the life of both of these projects, a new building would bring savings to the overall county for the life of the project in today's dollars of about $11 million. So it's quite interesting in looking at this, and I think the two, the two big factors for that is, like I had mentioned in the beginning, the 20-year life of a renovation project versus 30, getting another 10 years' life out of that, and the annual energy costs and O&amp;M costs, they really make that difference. Any questions that I may be able to address?
Looks like no.
Okay. And then, just lastly, this is in your packet, and I won't go through all of this, but basically, we've done a breakdown on the capital investment cost, and there's plenty of information there that we could drill down into if there's any questions on the capital side. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I would like to do a very brief presentation, Hans would, if it's appropriate, on the overall concept as it's been changed from what we talked about last time per your direction. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, members of the board, I'm Hans Papke with DLR Group. I'm an architect who's working with Larry on this project, and what we have up on the screen is your current existing facility, campus, and we have called out all the building square footages and parking space requirements for each one of these buildings. We are looking at, with what Larry had mentioned, redevelopment and demolition of Building D, a couple ancillary buildings, Building C and E, and we are proposing to develop the site and build a new state-of-the-art, three-story administration building for the county. That's this box here in blue. It'll be sequenced in a couple different sequences where Building D and a couple ancillary buildings will be demolished. I don't believe anyone is residing in Building D currently, as the county attorneys move to their new facility. Once these buildings are demolished, then construction of the new three-story, 72,000-square-foot building will take place. Once it's complete with construction, members and employees in Building E will then transition over to the new facility, and then Building E will then be demolished, where a new parking lot will be made. And then the next phase would be to install solar-covered parking for employees and for anybody coming to the site. Looking at the new facility, we don't, we didn't break down the individual, the building itself, into how many parking stalls are required on this slide, but what we're looking at with this slide is all the departments that are going to be housed in this new facility, which would be the assessor, treasurer, recorder, human resources, finance, public lobby, there'll be a public lobby, shared spaces, budget, economic development, workforce, and then some shell space for future growth. And that's what will give us the 72,000 square feet, three stories. On the site, we looked at several different locations, as mentioned prior in previous presentations, and the site that we chose is to pull it away from the historic courthouse, so the historic courthouse can stand alone on the site and be what it is, a beautiful historic facility. Next to the, some of these numbers here for square footage, these were based on programmatic requirements provided by Penalt County Facilities Management to us, and these are, the number next to that are the required employees or current employees, which is full-time employees. And this is just a breakdown of the current campus, of all the buildings that are on campus, their total square footage, the parking requirements and the parking provided. And then on the right-hand side is with the new development and demolition of two buildings, the new square footage for all buildings and the parking requirements for that. And as you can see, we're actually exceeding what the requirements, the parking calc requirements are with the new building siting. Some of these opportunities and challenges, you know, we're consolidating the county services into one location. We're adding a fresh appearance to the complex by removing some old buildings that should be demolished, and a new current state-of-the-art building can take its place. It's going to have a great street presence to Butte Street. There will be a large entry plaza that creates a front porch for the public, so it's a place to congregate before entering the building, and we can reduce the public lobby size to allow some of the space to be outside for public gathering. We'll be adding some solar shade parking for everybody to use on the site. The way we can sequence the building, the construction of the building, I think the site allows for a very smooth transition between sequencing of constructing the facility. The building itself, we're going to take advantage of the views in daylight, and, once again, the public courtyard, and then there's also some room on the site for future growth, but we did not present any of that in this. Some of the challenges are just limited parking during construction with fencing and demolishing some of the current parking that we have. It's going to be a challenge for just the duration of construction, and the fence, you know, will take up a certain amount of the site, and that'll all be proposed once approved and designed and gone through all the required permitting through the City of Florence. all the required permitting through the city of Florence, town of Florence, sorry. Some of the design concepts, I can fly through this because we've already presented this to you. But, you know, we looked at just some modern ways to use shade canopies, brick. And looking at the current buildings around here, we'd like the building itself to kind of blend in and not really stick out. We want the courthouse to be the main gem on the site. These aren't, these are just some, some eye candy to see what it could be. This is nothing that's been fully designed and vetted with anybody. But I can just flip through them pretty fast. And that's the end of the presentation. Are there any questions?
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. My request was that this, the CM at risk when we get down to that point. But I want to back up to the, the numbers that we were used for the number of employees, square footage. Your, um, what was the title of that?
FTEs.
FTEs, but, um, so we just had a, we just had a presentation, I think last, the last meeting, about how the whole employee situation, wanting to work from home, not being in the facility, not, might be a full-time employee but not necessarily onsite because of the tasks that they perform. I really think this workforce environment is changing and is changing rapidly in the next couple of years. And I think there should be real, a little more deep study as to exactly what that's going to look like. The factors we used a year ago may not be the factors you'd use today. And, I mean, I just, I just think that really has to do some deep dive analysis of what this workforce is going to look like in the future in just in totality because people want to work from home, people, and if you want to employ them, you may have to, to allow that. I mean, it's going to have to be part of the, part of the deal. So anyway, I just, it's just one of those things to me that I think is really requires some, some understanding of where, where we're going in the future.
Yes, sir. What we are planning is, once this project has been approved to move forward, we're going to meet with all the stakeholders. Those numbers, the employees that they have right now listed in their game from various department. But of course, some of those employees, they work in the field, others they work on satellite offices. So when we go to the real programming of this project in details, those employees, they will just have a temporary workstation in this new proposed building, especially those, for example, as you can see in the assessors department. Assessors department, they have about 20 appraiser every day they are in the field. They just need a temporary workstation. And everybody knows, this department, they knows that. And we have to follow, we have to follow the master planned standard that has been developed in 2016. In that master plan, if you are not a supervisor, you are not entitled to a enclosed offices because real estate is expensive, we know that. Those with critical supervisor section chief that are critical in the operations that requires offices, there is still a certain standard for that. If you are a first-hand supervisor, you are, sometimes you are in a hundred square feet, bill, uh, hundred square feet of offices, which is pretty small. Then if you are higher on that division chief, those standards were already been set. Once we go into the details of this project in the programming, everybody will be screened, the, the department director or the elected officials will dictate that. So we just listen, just like what we did in the development services. As you, you have seen the building, how efficient it is. The section chief and department directors, they are on the both sides of the building. And most of the people who are working in the field and others that are not supervisors, they are in a open space. That provides a good operational and efficiency and coordination with the workers.
Okay. A little bit deeper in the weeds than I needed to go. I guess my first question was, what you mentioned here, these are the numbers they have today.
No, sir.
These aren't, this, this, on that slide, that's not the, that's not the number of people they have in their departments today?
Correct. With the projects.
You've already, you've already projected more employees in this?
Five to 10 years.
Five to 10 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, anyway, and we don't need to dive down into the weeds today on this. But my point is, I just think that the work environment, I think for, not just the county, but just in general, is going to sway a different direction. And I think we need to pay close attention to it. Something we used as a factor in 2016 may not be a good factor today.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's all I wanted to say, and we'll work on it in more detail later. Okay.
Goodman, I think was, I had to stand up first. Fire at will.
And, and I guess the other thing is, is that we need to look at, we, we still have empty spaces in the new facilities that we've built. Quite a bit, actually, in some of these facilities. And so, and, and the whole purpose of us building these facilities to bring it closer to the citizens in those communities. And so I don't know what some of our assessors office or our treasuries offices and our community development, what they're doing, like for instance, Santan Valley, you know, as far as trying to fill those offices as well. I, you know, or even taking current staff and putting them over there, I don't know. But I'm just saying that's some of the stuff that we need to really look at, too.
Excellent question, sir. Those space provided in the satellite offices, we did the same thing. We sat down with the department. The reason you don't see those work stations filled that yet, because those building, we were, we just completed them a couple of months ago. And you have seen, you will see in this next fiscal year, the additional personnel requests by this department that will be sitting on those satellite offices.
Yeah, I, and, and I'm just thinking of, of, if I might continue, Mr. Chair, is Assessor Wolf came in on the last presentation that you guys did. And he was talking about his particular facility there. We have a brand-new facility that some of these, if, if they're busting at the seams or they need additional room, we have that. And just keep putting that out there, which I'm sure he's aware, but anybody else out there, that I would like to see some of our buildings more, the current buildings as well, start to get manned. So, thank you.
It is coming, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You said, once the project is approved, we'll meet with the stakeholders and kind of do some planning. I think we ought to flip that upside down and start look, meet with stakeholders now. Do line-level employees want to work in cubicles? Do they have a job where concentration is key? And working in a cubicle would negatively impact their ability to do their job? And I agree with, I think, both Miller and Supervisor Goodman. We ought to be examining the space that we have around the county so we can minimize commutes. So I think we ought to slow our roll here and really examine this, the bigger picture.
Yes, sir. The steps that we're going to do on this project is, once this project has been approved, the county management and the stakeholders, the first thing we will do is, we will sit down and we will have a, what we call a pre-design meeting. We will tell them about the project. We will tell them what delivery method are we going to use. I'm going to explain its delivery method so that they will be, they will understand what a CM at risk is, what a design build is, and a design bid build. We will educate them with that. And then, once we go to the programming process, that is the opportunity for the elected officials, I meant the assessors, recorders and treasurers, and department director dictates how many among their key personnel staff sitting in an office. They will tell us, I, I don't dictate those, and the architect don't dictate that. Because the operation of the department relies on those department directors and to the elected officials. As an engineer and the architect, what we do is we listen and we have discussion. Once we have a consensus, we will deliver the design.
And I guess what's, if I might, I guess what we're trying to say is that we need to, you're talking about building a building first. And then, that's what I'm hearing, okay? And so what I think, what, what I'm saying and suggesting is that, let's slow it down a bit. You're talking about building a building that's going to fill capacity within the next 10 years. Why don't we let's fill the capacity that we have right now and start working towards and looking at the efficiencies, doing the kind of study that Supervisor Miller was talking about, as far as working at home, what's, we don't know where that's all going to go. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm at on this.
Again, I, I, I want to be clear that I think the procedure you just outlined is a little bit different than what I have in my mind. And when I'm talking about a CM at risk, the county will kind of decide what they want. Then we put it out on the street and allow teams to come and present to us. And we have the sideboards on what we, we were looking for from, from within our organization. And then we see who can bring forth the project to the dollars amounts that we're talking about spending. It's a little di, different process than we've ever done here. But I want to see that. I've asked, I've asked management about this for a number of years. So again, I, to use Supervisor Kavanaugh's, let's slow our roll a little bit on this one because I want to get it right going forward. And it's, it's not, it's not a slam on anybody. It's just a different procedure that has been done in the, in the past. And I think it's one that is efficient and produces a product that everybody's happy with. So again, we got a long ways to go on this one. There's, we're, we're not going to be knocking buildings down in the morning. So we got a lot of time to work out some details, and I'd only do that in this meeting here. But I just want to say that.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. I think, is that everything on that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Discussion on future agenda items, we already talked about this earlier in the meeting. Do we need to officially, officially do that?
Mr. Chairman, just so I can clarify, so far I have possibly two future agenda items, but it could be interwoven into the same, possibly. One dealing with, you know, the, the fire situation and bringing in the proper parties in a work session to explain what, what the board's role is, you know, what some of these other parties' roles are, maybe even getting Florence involved, you know, their fire and, and so forth. And the other possibility is, and this is where they could overlap, is whether Florence or Queen Creek in this situation, when it comes to fire protection for some of these new facilities that are going up, such as the LG plant, how is the planning going to go ahead and, and encompass the concerns of some of the citizens that you've heard here today? So those could be two work session items, or they could be one work session item. Probably needs to be two because I think you may be bringing someone from Queen Creek who really is, is in control of the fire for the LG area as opposed to anyone from Florence. But Florence definitely for the, the people that were here this morning speaking. Those are the two I have so far.
So, Mr. Chair, to, to put more clarification to the LG, if I might, not only the fire suppression, because that seems to be, that, that is one of the concerns there. But there's other concerns, the contamination question, other issues that, that has been out in the public when it comes to these type of facilities, manufacturing of batteries. And so what we need is, what I'm looking for, is some, a work session to where we have experts come, like the ADQ, our air quality individual, and permitting processes for these type of manufacturers from the state level, addressing these things because we obviously have concerned citizens out there that are coming up with their own information. And, and that information is, is prob, it's, it's pretty scary based on what we've been hearing. And so we would like, what I'm asking is that we do a work session that specifically addresses some of the questions and concerns that the citizens have. That's on the, that's on the LG plant. When it comes to the fire, you know, I would like what, we need a, we need a, a pretty comprehensive study of what our role as a county, when it comes to fire protection, do we have a role as a county? Does the state allow us that role for fire, fire protection? And what are the alternatives for these communities, such as one that we heard from today? And can we help them, provide them the right information and give, help give them the right direction to do that? We've been working with this one particular organization already. And so those are some things that I want to do. In addition to that, there was some serious stuff that was, that was, and I don't know if we do this in an executive session, session, regarding the particular incident that just occurred. I want to know some more of the background information on some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of piggyback on a couple of things there, to the fire issues, I think it's really important that we educate the public on how these fire districts work, how, if there are intergovernmental agreements with, with cities and towns and other agencies. There's a lot of moving parts there. So I, I think we need state statute in there and what our responsibility is. And then I was reminded of something today in another presentation that I knew, but I'd forgotten, we have a fire marshal. I'm not, I was not thinking about that, is what would the role, what was his role, if any, in this thing? And I know that has to do more on the new construction scenarios, I believe, and probably job site access. But again, and what are their, what is the county's guidelines on that? If we do in fact have a fire marshal, where does that play into all of these risk factors, I guess is a better way to put it. So, so anyway, there's a lot, lot there, and I don't see any one meeting handling all this.
Don't.
But, but anyway.
But with that, Mr. Chair, you know, I did have a house burned down. And it was a volunteer fire department that, that was there. But they were a fire district with a volunteer fire department. And this was just here in Arizona, down in the Palominas area, Cochise County. And so I don't know all the ramifications of everything and how that all works. But I know we had a volunteer fire department.
I think that will come out in these meetings if we're going to have.
Yeah, exactly. So that's the part that I'm getting at.
Right now, we're just setting the future agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have a discussion item on 5/4/2022 next week about the, simply the, the 911 dispatching element that was an issue this morning. And so I think the, the immediate problem, if we can bring those to light next week, have a discussion, Mr. Volkmore or his designee, Sheriff Lamb or his designee, the sheriff's manager or commander, who is assigned to supervise dispatch, Larry Benson, the fire chief, the dispatch manager, and the fire marshal. I think those people would be important to have in a discussion next week to see if we can resolve the 911 issue as quickly as possible.
Just, yeah, I do think, definitely invite the city of Florence to, to these meetings. And also, this is, like I said, this will come out in it also. But even realtors, they need to do a better job of selling and letting people know what exactly they're buying and where they're buying. See that all the time in my address is Apache Junction, but I'm not in Apache Junction. I think you see that in Florence as well. Even the explanation of the taxes, when you get your property taxes, why am I paying for this? I don't live there. But I, I think that all needs to come out in a discussion as well. So I think that is set. So I'm going to now convene and So I'm going to now convene and ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in executive session.